We ready to go?
We're ready.
All right. Um. I am going to call the Moab City Council regular meeting to order on November 12th at six o'clock PM. And Lizzie, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Oh, good.
Yes, Lizzie, you can do it.
Yeah. Sure, you just have to say aye.
Yeah.
Wait, okay, everybody follows along with me?
Yes.
Okay.
I would pledge this to the United States of America and to the equally ambitious fans. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, Lizzie, thank you.
Should take off my hat.
Great. Uh, next on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our department update with Alexi and she's gonna update us on the Utah renewable communities.
Right now. Okay, I, so. The Utah Renewable Communities has been in a consideration process that's taken quite a while. Uh, and it's at the planning, uh, the Public Service Commission at the state level at this point. And it could be potentially coming back to us in January for another decision point. So the intent of going through this update now is that if it did come back in early 2026, um, we'd be ready to think about the next step. So the overview includes what Utah Renewable Communities is, uh, what our participation has been like, what the timeline is for the program and next steps. So the Utah Renewable Communities is a group of communities, there are nineteen of them, cities, towns, counties, that have the same goal of one hundred percent clean electricity for the homes and businesses in their communities by 2030. This goal is considered a net one hundred percent goal because the idea is to, between existing resources and new resources, meet a hundred percent of the demand in the participating communities. So that's the net one hundred percent. Uh, so some of these sources are already online and then some of them would have to then come online, potentially up to half of it. Um, that would be new energy on the grid for the participating communities. And that new electricity on the grid, um, would be exclusively serving these communities, but for any participate, any residents who choose to opt out of it, they would still be a part of the Rocky Mountain Service. And anybody who's in it would now have renewable electricity, but also through Rocky Mountain Power. So it doesn't change who our utility is. It doesn't change the reliability of service. It would just change the source of that electricity. So why are we doing it? Um, it meets Moab's goals. We passed a resolution for a hundred percent renewable electricity by 2030 and an eighty percent reduction in greenhouse gases by 2040. So it meets our goals. In addition, it also allows, uh, us to work with another group of communities with a similar goal to be able to purchase electricity at scale, which makes more sense and is more accessible to more people. Um, your Utah Renewable Communities represent about twenty-five percent of Rocky Mountain Power's electricity sales in Utah. So that puts us part of a bigger block of electricity purchasing. Uh, also it provides an additional choice, uh, for residents and businesses in Moab. Uh, some people have access to rooftop solar or other things, but not everybody has that ability. Um, they may not own, they may not have a roof that's suitable. This puts another option out there for Moab and the people and our businesses, uh, to choose from. Uh, and in addition, because Rocky Mountain Power is our utility and we don't have a municipal, uh, utility, again, it, it gives us an avenue to pursue this. Uh, also provides investment in local communities. Uh, we're looking at for the new purchases to happen more in kind of a regional area. Um, not specifically in any one location, it's going through an RFP process, but the idea that it can create property taxes and invest in small communities throughout Utah. And also, uh, supporting our health and environmental goals, um, avoiding pollution that can be associated with other sources and especially related to cleaner air quality with cleaner electricity. So participation, uh, hypothetically, if all of this moves forward and goes through and, uh, we as a community continue to participate in the Utah Renewable Communities for the, any customer, they would remain Rocky Mountain Power customers. Uh, they would automatically be enrolled and have the choice to opt out. Initially opting out would be free, but eventually in order to try to stabilize the participation in the program, there would be a termination fee after the launch. And right now they're estimating the electricity costs would increase by three to four dollars per month for a participant. Some of these things will continue to be finalized as this program application goes through. So these are just estimates. Now, we also are required by law to have a program for low-income customers. This involves extra outreach and engagement that must be done on a timeline that is part of the legislation. It also involves access to a monthly bill credit up to seven dollars for those participants. Um, particularly, this would apply to people who are on Schedule Three, the home lifeline, uh, electric lifeline, uh, plan. And then also people who are low-income customers would have their waived, their termination fee waived. Okay, so here's the timeline where we are in the process. The enabling legislation passed in 2019 and then communities, including Moab, adopted, uh, resolutions for net one hundred percent renewable electricity. Then, uh, communities signed, uh, an ILA. Uh, Moab chose to sign as an anchor and that meant that we were sort of a backstop, uh, for some of the costs. So at that point, Moab put in, uh, about eight thousand five hundred dollars as an anchor, which is based on the percentage of the population of our city in comparison to the program cost. Uh, then this came to city council again in November 2023, uh, to sign the utility agreement. All of the communities had to sign that to move forward. And now we're at the program application stage. So this, uh, will be at a public hearing coming up in December. Uh, and if that is approved, then we'll move into an implementation timeline that is strictly outlined in the legislation, giving the city ninety days. Um, and any participating community, those ninety days to adopt an ordinance to continue with the program. So the key takeaway for today is that this Public Service Commission hearing is coming up. There will also be opportunities for public witnesses to, uh, be present at six PM. It's in Salt Lake City, there is a virtual option. I included in the agenda summary how to participate in that. URC is reprimanding that all of the communities have some representation in either in person or virtually at the hearing. Then coming up, um, the Public Service Commission will consider the unresolved items. Um, there's some disagreements on the particulars of how the program would operate between Rocky Mountain Power and the communities. So the Public Service Commission will make a ruling on those things and it's possible that is earliest January 2026, there could be an approval. At that point, that ninety day window opens and then that is the commitment from communities that they do want to participate in this program. Uh, we would consider that at that time and, um, we'd have that, those ninety days to make a decision. Uh, from there, we would enter into, uh, reimbursing Rocky Mountain Power for two rounds of required notices. This would cost approximately five thousand dollars, we estimate for Moab. And then after that, uh, people would have the option to stay opted in or to opt out. And the cost of continuing that program would then be managed by the participants in the program. So at that point, the participating communities who have been working on launching it would become a, a backseat to the actual customers who are participating. And that's my update. Are there any questions?
Um, so at, at the ninety days, when they, when they approve it, the ninety days, will they have more costs nailed down?
Yeah, we should have a firmer estimate. Um, once we get through the Public Service Commission, some of these things will be decided by them, which will determine the final program costs and what we would expect that to cost, both for participants and for the city, uh, continuing. So we will have some more specifics once we have whatever the Public Service Commission has decided.
Did, when, when the council approved this in 2021, did, did they put like a financial threshold on it of like, you know, um, I'm, I'm just kinda curious, you know, because things have changed a lot in the last year as far as government subsidies or federal subsidies.
Right. So, uh, are you talking about how expensive it would be for participants?
I was wondering like, yeah, like four years ago, it has a different outlook than, than right now as far as costs and, you know, federal, um, subsidies that went into renewable energy.
Mm-hmm.
No one really knows if renewable energy is gonna be cheaper, more expensive, you know, or.
Right. Yeah, to my knowledge, there wasn't something in particular that we passed, but part of the agreement among the communities is that there has to be an agreement of those communities to raise those program costs. So the feeling among the communities is that the cap on how much this could cost is actually from us as a participating communities, because a lot of, um, city councils, commissions have the same concerns about getting too expensive. And that's where that three to four dollars comes from is the sort of comfortable threshold of how expensive the communities, um, would let it be before, um, as the Utah Renewable Communities, we would, we no longer support it.
Okay.
So we, we are sort of, uh, as a group, our own limit.
Okay, that's, okay.
Any other questions for Lexi?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Keep us informed. I'm sure you will. All right, next up, we have our consent agenda. We have four items, the ratification of a merger between Union Pacific and Norfolk Southern Pacific or Southern, Norfolk Southern. So it's a merger of those two railroad, um, entities. Uh, the quarterly finance report, which Michael gave to us at our last meeting, you're just accepting that report. Um, approval of the minutes from October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting and approval of the bills against the city of the Moab in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three hundred and ninety-eight thousand and thirty cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Caitlin.
A second.
Second by Toni. Any discussion, Caitlin?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could give us a little more information about the railroad merger letter.
Well, it's in your packet. Um, basically, I, uh, Nathan Anderson, who works with the, uh, Union Pacific, asked the city to support this merger that's gonna be happening. Um, maybe, I guess there needs to be, there's a process that goes through. We thought it was a good idea to support this. Um, we felt like one of the things we really wanted to encourage the railroads to do is start looking at more transportation options around the state, and so we included that in the letter. Um, and that's really all I can tell you about it, other than it's something that's probably gonna happen and I think it's probably a good, a good move. And I thought we would be supportive of it, should be supportive of it. Things, not a whole lot to really talk about there, other than it seems like a good thing, especially if, if they can start doing more economic development type transportation. Any, anything, Toni, from you? Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, next we move on to our general business. And we start with a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, an ordinance of the city, Moab City Council of Moab annexing the Shamrock Twenty-Five LLC property at Fourteenth, uh, South High, Fourteenth and South Highway one ninety-one to the city of Moab and assigning the zone of C four general commercial to the parcel. So I'm gonna open that public hearing at six fourteen and Cory is just gonna give us a brief, um, update. We, this has been moving through the process, you know, over the last eight months, eight months or so. And now we're at the point where we're ready to finalize the annexation. So this is the final step in the prop, process.
Correct, yes. Um, without, uh, more extensive presentation, we've been through, I think, most recent would be, uh, I guess with public hearing, how would you like this information organized? I kind of popped up with public hearing, but it was kinda, am I coming up now or would you?
Yes, no.
Yeah, okay.
Make your presentation now. I just opened the public hearing, you present and then, and then public can come and talk.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so yes, this was a property that was, uh, through resolution approved for pre-annexation agreement under conditions to access the C, under the C four. Um, with that, I would only like to additionally specify that under that pre-annexation agreement, where we are establishing the zone, we are also establishing the concept of the development. Now, within that, it's, um, having not gone through our full development review process, unable to with immediate certainty to say exactly how that development will look or be organized. But generally, it is the, uh, desire of the council to, through the annexation, know what that development's going to be. So there is, in that language, some fluctuation in the number of units that can be housed in the development. Um, but essentially that would be upon the developer to prove compliance and density capacities when they go through the site plan process. So as we exit the annexation process tonight, if the, uh, council approves the annexation, we'd move into that development review process and go through standard compliance review, uh, for planning commission approval of site plan and then into the building permit process. I can pause there.
There was a pre-annexation agreement with this as well.
Correct.
So could you explain how that works with?
Sure. Johanna, would you actually mind? Johanna has our, has our annexation presentation teed up for our other items tonight, but maybe it's helpful just to share now.
I think it is, because this is the end of a process.
Yeah, so it might be good to move, move the material up for this, for this sake. But, um, yeah, for a pre-annexation process, those are adopted through resolution. So in that, it is an agreement between the city and the developer, under which the conditions of an, uh, property may be annexed or shall be annexed into the city. So it is not an annexation itself, but it does profile the explicit conditions that we would be going through. So again, this is, uh, not where we are tonight. We are at, that's okay. This is the, this is the presentation. Um, so we are, we are down at our public hearing city council. It was at the bottom of that flow chart, uh, with the council decision. But pre-annexation, uh, process does not require the council to annex the property, but gives the developer a, a sense of security as to not only the zoning, but any additional conditions the city may require upon the development of that project. So it's, it's a mutually beneficial tool to advance the particular project versus a, a broad zoning of, we'd like to come to the city and we would like to receive the R three's, R three zone, in this case, C four. But we're not sure what we want to build. This is a very specific development.
Right, and I think, um, part of the pre-annexation process is we, there's certain things that we want. And so for somebody to want to annex to the city, there's some negotiation that goes on so that we feel like we're getting what we need. If you're coming into the city, these are the things that we would like. And n- normally that's been affordable housing. It's been housing projects. So that's some of the things that we negotiate as part of the pre-annexation process.
So, thank you, Johanna. This is our slide. Thanks so much. Um, so yes, through the agreement, we were able to establish the C four zoning as well as the construction, how those proposed units would factor in with the fifty percent A E H requirement. Um, understandably, there's some ability to amend based on the number of, uh, units that can be accomplished through that density. But because the unit, uh, excuse me, the project density will be affected by the horizontal development standards, how the parking lays out, how drains lays out, which cannot be comprehended in advance without a, a significant amount of engineering, which if they aren't even annexed into the city, is a pretty high request. So this is something with Nathan and Michael, we've coordinated with developers of what, we're really threading a needle of enough information, the council has a very good concept of what will be approved and what will be developed with some flexibility for the developer to actually accomplish their, their major goal. So we say we might see that fifty-four number increase, it may decrease, but this is, I believe, fifty-four was the minimum amount. We believed it really could feasibly be fit. We could see that number rise potentially to sixty-two units if they were to navigate, uh, buffering, drainage, all those things that it allowed for more, more horizontal development.
What won't change those, the fifty percent?
Correct. And yeah, in the pre-annexation, which again, we're, we're kind of beyond that, we're into the annexation itself, the pre-annexation already being, uh, approved, had a number of provisions that navigated that fluctuation that we, we, the city would not get the short end of the stick in that case. It's, it's a very even draw based on the development build out.
And all the proposed units are allowed in the C four, so the fifty-four number is allowed.
Correct, yes, this is the, yeah, not.
So there's no.
Giveaway of entity here. Nope, nope. The only thing I think that is really a concession is we have fairly favorable development standards by right in the C four, which is what the developer was wanting to come into the city to utilize. And for us, the A E H, which for an apartment project like this, is actually, I think, and I won't speak for Ellen, uh, on behalf of the development, but a fairly reasonable requirement because that's the occupancy you would very likely be having anyway. So it's a nice, I think it's a really, really nice compromise and draw.
Right. Council, do you have any, uh, questions for Johanna or Cory before I open it up to the public? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, anybody from the public would like to speak? Give everybody a few minutes to decide. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-one PM. And now I will ask for the consideration of approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen or ordinance of the Moab City Council of Moab annexing the Shamrock Twenty-Five LLC property at Fourteenth and South Highway one ninety-one to the city of Moab and assigning the zone of C four general commercial to the parcel. Do I have a motion?
Um, I'll move to approve city of Moab ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, an ordinance of the Moab City Council of Moab annexing Shamrock Twenty-Five LLC property at Fourteenth and South Highway one ninety-one to the city of Moab and assigning the zone of C four general commercial to the parcel.
Motion by Luke, second.
A second.
Second by Toni. Discussion, Luke? Toni? Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, Cory, you're up again. And now we are starting at the beginning of this process that we just showed you up on the screen for another property. Um, and so right now, we're, we are considering accepting the petition for annexation, which means somebody's wanting to annex into the city and we're accepting their petition to start that process. So that's all that means. Um, and so this parcel is located at four eighty-six River Sands Road in Moab eight four five three two, and we are asking for the petition to annex into the city of Moab following the state municipal annexation code process. So Cory, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, I would like to slow down on this one. All right, then thank you for the opportunity with that one. As we're closing it out, it made a lot of sense to really recap. Um, so we're having one item that has just come to the end and now one that is just beginning.
Right.
Um, so I'll, I think I'll go ahead and let Johanna go through kind of the general standards, or, excuse me, the general overview of the project, and then maybe I'll slow down a little bit to talk about some technicality elements of both the annexation process as well as this site in particular.
Um, yes. Up on the screen, you can see I got arrows pointing to the parcel. It is currently zoned rural residential in the county and they are asking to be, um, rezoned as they're annexed in as C two, our commercial residential zone, and then on the upper three, two-thirds, um, zoned as R three multi-household. Um, this also has a pre-annexation agreement. In this agreement, um, there's a, an acknowledgement that this is gonna, um, perhaps look like an island, but, um, yeah, and then there's a, a hundred percent, um, A E H requirement for any residential dwellings that would be built. Um, and again, that kind of split zone, uh, the rationale for that is there's a existing laundry facility on the bottom that they'd like to continue that use. So that's gonna fit into the C two. And then on the top, uh, they have a new plan for what they'd like to do.
A new plan that's not that plan?
Yes, yes, pardon. This plan is the conceptual plan that was attached to the pre-annexation, which outlined a twenty unit.
So that's not.
New, new to what then is existing now. They want to build, so not different than what you can see.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
Oh, good catch, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so in our, uh, diagram here, we are at the exception phase. The petition has been received by the recorder. Now we're to you. Um, going forward, we'll go through the noticing, um, any objections and then come back to you after we see a planning commission.
Okay, um, Johanna, would you go back to the last slide?
Yeah.
Um, so yes, moving into the acceptance of this petition, the pre, again, the pre-annexation formulates how this annexation may occur. What we're looking at now, which is to say, in no way does a pre-annexation authorize, approve, or otherwise guarantee an annexation to the city. That is purely a, a negotiated agreement that if the city were to annex, here are the conditions that you would be accepted in on, and that we can anticipate receiving from. So again, that's security on both ends, an actively, pretty, pretty helpful tool for both the developer and the city. Now we're engaging into just accepting the petition, that we're willing to go through this process, meeting what would be kind of the minimum, uh, statutory requirements of the state to accept it. That's at this point, we would go through the remainder of summer and the recorder's office process. If there are qualifying objections within that process, we would engage with the boundary commission in the county. Um, and then it would ultimately come back to city council with a public hearing for final acceptance, uh, under those terms that we've already negotiated. So with that being said, the second bullet point here, acknowledgement of exceptions in the unincorporated islands. Given that this property is housed within our annexation policy boundary, which is slightly different, I understand within the community, it's, it's terribly confusing. And even on the state level, the legislative, legislature has continued to amend how annexations can or can't occur in some of those standards. Um, so when we're talking about islands or peninsulas, those are very well-defined and lar- largely, uh, broad areas. So when we talk about a peninsula, it is not a singular property that necessarily would constitute a peninsula of unincorporated within the city. That's something with what we might see is if the city were to have annexed something, maybe potentially outside of its po- policy area, that does create an all type of certain mass acreage, that will be constituting a peninsula. Because again, what we're not, I would like us to stay out of the territory of nitpicking off of our own interpretations of those languages. Um, because what it's meant to do is ensure that we're adequately serving these properties. That's why they would not do a peninsula or an island, is that we wouldn't be able to adequately service. This area is clearly within our service boundaries. Um, so when we've been coordinating with county in the annexation, including a portion of River Sands, and maybe if we want to go there, Michael can talk more about it. That's what is in turn creating some of these exceptions that the county has already agreed to. So there, there's nothing here that would be objectable to the statutory requests of the state. Um, so we can circle back to that if there's any questions, but I did want to touch on that really quick because those could be some kind of flag words of islands or peninsulas. So it is nothing that is running afoul of our process or standards, but it's something that in this particular instance makes sense. Let's maybe go to, do we have site plan pull up, uh, on this? It's in the one side. Let's go there.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll talk a little bit about the particulars of this. development and how it was coordinated through the pre-annexation, because I know the council's received some comments from the public um, and just wanted to have that be understood. So both maybe as Johanna's pulling this up, this up, process wise, for the pre-annexation, there was concern of, well, we're just hearing about this in the community, where was our input? That was again, just an agreement to create terms in which it could be annexed. So there is no public hearing or larger public engagement process at a pre-annexation level. Um, what we would see is going through this process, like we did tonight, the opportunities for public hearings that if the conditions make it through the process and we do come before city council, that is the public's opportunity to speak to how it does or doesn't satisfy or advance our general plan for our annexation policies. Um, so don't want the community to feel they've missed the boat on this in any way. All that's been approved so far is the zoning and then the potential development style. So when we're looking at this uh very conceptual site plan, just like I was speaking about with our prior annexation discussion, this is conceptual, has not been approved through our uh development review process. There's a number of measurements here that are not observed that we would require. Buffering, for instance, separation of structures by building code, none of that's been assessed. But the applicant has to provide something for us to look at. So it does create this really tricky thing for us to understand and create um a reasonable level of, of both securities on how we, how we are to approach this. So regarding the, the number of units, uh, that type of element is that within the R three, under that density breakdown, that is the number of units that would be permitted in the R three by right. So we did not, again, give away any additional density through the pre-annexation agreement that wouldn't have already inherently been in the R three zone.
That, that twenty is acceptable in R three or is that with the A H increased that density?
Uh, the by rights and A E H actually in this um by right use parameter format is not a density bonus mechanism. Um, mostly because the R three and R four are often so dense, you, the density, inflating the density calculation doesn't actually do anything because of just like what we're going to see here. Sufficient parking, sufficient spacing is actually going to probably constrain the number of units before you can even achieve your maximum densities. So a bonus is redundant, if, if you will.
So if I can jump in really quick, so.
Yeah.
So this site plan, we're under no obligation to have to approve this site plan.
Right.
They still have to go forward through a process.
Yeah.
And prove that they can meet all of the standards of the code, which would require public hearings and things like that for site plans and at the planning commission if, if required. Okay.
Correct.
But certainly for the annexation, and at the end of the day, the, this, this site plan is just to help us to understand what, what the intent of the developer is. And then the other thing I was going to bring up really quick is you mentioned there will be opportunities for public hearings and things like that. Can you just go through really quick what processes this has to go through that people will have a con, an opportunity to comment at?
Perfect. Thank you. Um, sorry, would you jump?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, so from here on out, if the council were to accept this petition, we are going to go through the remainder of this flow chart. Much of this flow chart is um through an administrative process in the backend. And there are a considerable amount of both steps and noticing periods throughout that. That's why annexations take so long is the state requires the opportunity during each individual steps noticing periods for comment and otherwise. Um, so upon acceptance, where we have the star, it pretty quickly moved through a certification process and recorded noticing period. And in that timeframe, that's when qualifying objections could come forward. Now, the state is very specific on who is a qualified entity to make an objection. Oftentimes, it, it is not a property owner. They are larger agriculture interests, um, utility interests. That it's, it's something kind of out of our wheelhouse, you know, something you see much more on maybe the Los Angeles front area. Um, that's not to say that Sitla couldn't come in for some reason. I don't see them qualifying here. Uh, maybe in nature conservancy, again, they don't qualify either in this instance. Anyway, so there is that opportunity there to make a qualifying objection. It's going through planning commission, whereas that public meeting, not necessarily a public hearing, but it would be held in a public, public meeting there. If there were objections, we bump up to a different track, which is the boundary commission, which I believe would have a public um of the qualifying entities, a public meeting in which they would speak. If we don't receive any, we go to our public noticing period for the council. We have our public hearing, which we had tonight for another annexation. Uh, that completes the annexation process. Okay, stick with me now. Now we're moving into development review. So they would submit their pre-application and development review application, much like a site plan, as Johanna mentioned, also probably a minor subdivision um to establish the two new properties of which would align with the zoning uh split. And then through that new development, just go through the administrative development review process. So not an additional public hearing per se, but an opportunity for public testimony to be held on, from any of the property owners or any qualifying citizen uh during that planning commission meeting for the adoption of that. But it would be at that point administratively approved if the project complies with all standards. Johanna did have a, a bullet point. If the property owner finds that during this process, the, the status quo deal on the standards are insufficient to get what he needs, they potentially could come back through a development agreement, which would go before council, public hearing, planning commission, a full public process. So once we zone them in, they can develop by right under the terms of their pre-annexation agreement. If there were a need for more density or a need for concession of setbacks or anything else, that would have to go through a full another public process, including planning commission, public hearing and city council approval. Um, so a bit of pick your own path, but many other intervals uh of before an approval body.
So if I can jump in again really quick, this, these last two, this annexation that the council just approved and this one, uh, when I was in Cory's position, I was, I was pretty involved with these before I became the city manager. So I've got a little bit of background, a little bit more background and more intimate knowledge of both of these. But I wanted to bring up, um, thanks for doing that, Cory, because it's, it's important to show that we're at the beginning of a process, not at the end of a process. But I also wanted to bring up the significance of why peninsulas matter. This truly is a peninsula and the state encourages cities to annex these peninsulas so that services can be provided in a consistent manner. When you have peninsulas or islands like this, you have different responding agencies in case of law enforcement. In our case, fires the same, doesn't matter, but there are uh different public works, different roads crews that are going out there and working on things. And in this situation, uh, trying to move closer to providing um services from the city in this area makes it more convenient, um, can uh consistent with the area where the police department would respond, respond there instead of the sheriff's department, things like that. There are some other things that had to go into this as well. In addition to the A E H and the things that we talked about, the road in that area is a little bit of a problem. It's not developed very well if it's developed at all. And there are storm drain issues and some other utility issues in there. We had talked to the county about that road when we took uh first took on this pre-annexation discussion and decided that with this annexation, if this were to happen, that the city would actually take this entire road all the way down to the Bird's property so that we could improve the road if, if we have the right of way, but, but more than anything, work on storm drain and things like that to improve the area. So we'd be taking that road over from the county at that time. And then we would also start providing city services to this property that's being annexed, but not the other properties down there until they annexed.
If I can jump in that to piggyback on that, there were, again, the comments from the community about, well, there's limited capacities of the infrastructure. Maybe the waters, they feel the sewers inadequate, the water surfaces are undersized, whatever it may be, that this development, if it were going to move forward, would have to improve the utilities up to the municipal services of wherever it is capacity uh for them to develop. So the community should not be afraid of, well, within the planning terms, it's called concurrency of building out our infrastructure as development grows. Usually that's an obligation of the developer that is causing the increased need or demand. So that would be the case here, but as Michael said, there are, you know, continuing uh development options or other properties that'll be on that road. They will also be able to be brought up to standard as they develop or further develop. And the city will be hand in hand in that process for sure. Um, so yeah, this, one of those elements of, we're obviously trying to be good stewards and responsible as we want to bring development to the city. So we're not trying to get out ahead of our skis, if you will, as far as infrastructure to actually support the development sizing.
So I guess, um, is this area served by Guissa right now? I, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious how that process works of transitioning out Guissa, transitioning in city. We have like double lines in the road or like, I got now.
So Guissa would stay the same because Guissa serves uh an area larger than the city. So that they would stay the same if they're being served by Guissa, they'd continue until we took over uh water or most likely irrigation or whatever it is. It's the storm drain that's the counties and then it's the um, the road that is the counties. And those are the two big things. Uh, there is a, I believe there's sewer line in the road.
Uh huh.
And, and we have water.
Yeah, this is the real properties.
We do have some injuries here.
So it would be installed with this, so we would be bringing sewer to that area with a new development. Uh, but the main things that we'd be taking over is we'd be start providing protective services and we'd also start providing uh road maintenance and storm drain maintenance.
Correct.
So my, my concern with this product, with this whole section is River Sands Road is kind of the land of misfit properties. You know, there's a little bit of everything going on down there. You have rural residential, you have, you know, one acre lots, five acre lots. You have commercial operations going on. Um, you have a tiny road, you know, and when you create this peninsula, I, I have concerns with that. To me, it seems like if we're going to annex a property on River Sands Road, maybe we should go to the Bird property or go to the Bird line and annex everything south, you know? Um, because we are going to be taking on um all this maintenance, you know, that road is super narrow. Um, there's no curb and gutter, there's no drainage, there's no anything, the, the financial impact for the city, you know, for, for this one peninsula would be pretty huge, I think. And then even telling these guys to come in and put in a development, or when you guys do this development, um, you know, you're going to have to go up to code, you're going to have this, you know, um, couple hundred feet of curb and gutter and then nothing after that, you know? And um, and it just, it's incomplete, you know, unless, unless we as a city want to go in and say, we're going to make this road curb and gutter both sides. Um, we're going to make that road, the road's super narrow and you got um, commercial businesses operating down there. You have, um, it gets a lot of use, you know, and I, I think that it would be great to have this in the Moab city limits. Um, my, my concern is, is that with this, if um, is it more that we can fight off? And also I have concerns with, with the R three when the majority of the homes down there are R two. You know, it makes sense to plug in an R three zone in the middle. But, but, but it's all, it's a bunch of misfits, you know, you got commercial, you are two, R three, you know, stuff. It's like, yeah, there's a lot going on on that street.
For sure. Um, and that, I think, if I may, from the staff perspective, those are all super valid uh, elements of discussion that probably makes sense through the rest of this process. So if the council feels that they're willing to engage in those discussions, if there could be a solution, we'd have to accept the petition to more fully establish the staff report to give you some of those findings of which then you can make the decision. As far, the only thing I would, the caveat to that is the zoning through the pre-annexation agreement has already been established through that agreement. So variability of zoning is limited and that we've, this, this council has already essentially approved, if this property is annexed, that would be the zoning which they would receive in concession for uh, the product that they would in, in, indefinitely build. And then, sorry, the last thing with that is that I think within our annexation policy boundary area, we, this council may begin to view our annexation process a bit differently in that it is inevitable that we will be annexing all properties within this at some point. So it's not saying, I think your comment about how we go about that and the pe, if you will, a piecemeal approach um versus a more blanket approach. That's a, a temperature of the council and, and where you guys would like to go into the future. But inevitably, we will be receiving this, this road. And maybe Michael can speak more about that negotiation with the county roads department of it. If I, you know, I don't want to overstep my bounds, it will not be improved by the time we annex it, whether that's within a couple of months or that's in many years, is my impression.
So we, we have the opportunity or the option, once we take over the road, where if we have C I T funds available, we can, we can do whatever we think is appropriate down there. Um, taking the road over from the county makes a lot of sense because uh it, it didn't make a lot of sense for us to just have a small portion of it and for them to have to come through the city to do maintenance on a very short dead end section of road. So it just seemed like a, uh, the right thing for us to do. As far as the peninsula goes, um, the idea would be to eventually close this peninsula up so that there would be uh consistency in services and utilities and all those types of things that are being offered down there. But it has been um kind of the policy that we, we have not been pulling or proposing anything that's pulling things in and, and the annexations that we have proposed to the city council so far, at least for the past few years, we've done a few, have all been at the owner's uh request. And so, so that's, that's why this one has come forward, just like the, the two that we did with um Ellen and the one that we did with, with Taishan way before that. Those were all requests of them. And I, and, and the property next door to this, I think, is R three.
Correct. Yeah, the, the lower image, it's kind of blocked by our, our thumbnail there, but you can see.
Property behind, yeah.
There's a, yeah, adjacency immediately to the east is R three, across the street is R two. But then, as you said, there's commercial down there, there's R four, it's, it's matched with a, I believe it's M H R B one even. This, so I think your hot, hotspot is exactly right. So maintaining a, a continuity of zoning is a bit of a challenge where, okay, if, if that is the, the attempt, I think you can kind of hit the target on multiple approaches. We did do in that essence of, well, okay, the other Jancy, if it's not R three, maybe if it were R two, um, a potential build out. They, in theory, by right, could be looking at sixteen units as opposed to twenty. So a factor of what your councils get could be, um, so they would have to go through a different mechanism. It wouldn't be a single property, aren't they? They'd go through a twin home subdivision, but essentially they could get up to sixteen potentially um just through.
In the R two.
In the R two by subdividing versus this is a singular, singular property developing with this A E H context. So a- again, it, it's a, it's a great discussion of council of, we, I think we've set the stage for if this were to annex, here's how the developer would need it to be annexed as far as um zoning and his approach project. But whether that fits, that's what this annexation process is for. That's exactly what these questions and this period is for. So you're, you guys are right on point.
If they went with like the subdividing route, like would that still be considered like a multi-household like development?
No.
Okay. So A E H wouldn't apply to it.
Correct. Unless somehow we were to renegotiate the development agreement and they still were willing to concede A E H, even though they'd be subdivisions, which we haven't typically seen. They've usually been reserved for uh multi-household projects.
So and, and Cory, I'm sorry, I, the, the whole, the process, the, the steps of the process are a little confusing to me. If, if we are challenged by the uh, the, the density that's being proposed, is, is this the opportunity to restart the conversation, to, to, to stop it? You know, you're, you were saying that the, the zoning that we're talking about carries forward in this process that, as it's established, is, is this the point? This petition, we're, we're counsel, if, if we are challenged by the density?
Uh, I think the answer is, I, I think the answer is yes to your question in that we have a pre-annexation agreement, not only establishing the, the zone, but also it says shall construct twenty multi-household units. So we know it will be multi-household, not individually subdivided. We know it will be the twenty in that if it were, say, and this was a consider, and go ahead, Mary.
I was just thinking, wouldn't, wouldn't that come up with the planning commission when you do this, this site plan review? I mean, it could change. I mean, that's, this is what they're requesting, but it may not actually fit when it gets to the planning commission.
Which if it gets to that stage, we'd have to probably renegotiate with the council of, hey, twenty really doesn't feasibly fit. I, I, I think it could. Right now, the style of development, they're doing uh stacked, single kind of towny home, uh, excuse me, a town, tiny home court style development. Well, if they were to smash that density together, all of a sudden you create horizontal space. So I believe twenty can be accomplished, maybe not in the format in which it's being proposed, we won't know.
So, so Colin, to answer your question. So so Colin, to answer your question, i- if you are challenged by the density right now, the council has an option to to not move forward with this. But the agreement that was signed by the council, approved by the council says if the council annexes this property, this is what most likely will happen there. And the and the city has basically agreed that that is, that is along the lines of of what we would accept down there. Even though we still have to go through the process, make sure that the density works and all that kind of stuff. Um it may not look exactly the same as it looks there, might look differently, but according to the zone, again, if if it's annexed, that zone will be assigned, that according to that zone, you could, what's that?
They would qualify.
They would qualify for up to that many units and they could, they could organize those a number of different ways.
And and so then a couple more questions, so then the the R two zone, you know, one of my challenges too is, and you know, as evidenced by the site plan and and the R three zoning, uh the the setbacks are challenging to me. Uh the, how does, how did the setbacks fall with the R two zone, are they?
The, if they were to approach, say, a to to maximize, if you will.
Yeah.
They would likely have to go through a twin home series development, so I think, I'm trying to pull an example that might be close. Um maybe the first phase one of Abbey subdivision, I don't expect everyone to have it in their brains. But that's how they essentially approached, is they had a a row of homes that were twin homes, but very narrow lots right in series. They would likely approach something similar to that, and given the densities of five thousand square feet per uh twin home lot, which has two individual ownerships on them, they could achieve up to, and this is what Johann and I ran, up to sixteen, we'd still, just like this, have to see how do the roads work, how the circulation setbacks. With this, as far as setbacks go, the peripheral setbacks are not really the problem. It's internal setbacks, the more division you have in homes, you create fire separation issues. And if those aren't attached with the firewall, there's space there, we have what can be a complex, and this is what we can't forecast, that we need to see architectural drawings, which they're unwilling or really it's not practical for them to do, unless they know they're actually moving forward with something. But yeah, with with um all there, you, it was kind of.
So just to finish my thought.
Yeah.
If the council decides to move forward with annexation, and you're not deciding if you're gonna annex tonight anyways, but if you move forward with annexation, you do end up annexing, there is an agreement on this property uh with the property owners.
Be at R three.
Exactly. But that's only there if you annex the property. The the council is under no obligation to annex this property at any time, it's completely discretionary uh to to annex or not, but if we, if you do annex, there is an agreement.
The, and with that number twenty, like where did that come from really? At the temperature, and if my memory is correct, at the time, we were navigating this with, I think, actually our previous annexation that we just went through, was kind of in the same realm of the council needs to know what they're getting or what they're signing for, because what we could have seen, because if it were A H, okay, that's a very helpful insurance element for us, that it would be a a product we like. But also, if they, if we did not put a number factor on there, it was just a hundred percent A H, well, he could, in theory, come in and place a single household on that property, which is not at all what I think the council was looking for at the time, they were looking for a multi household development. So if we didn't have a minimum threshold number, they could have come back with a totally different product that could have even through A E H, a very different occupancy, if you will. Um these designed in the way they are with the number of units, it's very likely by design and also with A E H, we're going to get a workforce housing product. Which is very upfront with what the owners, that's what they wanna do, it's a, it's going to be an employee workforce housing project.
Got it.
So that was again, the number, you know, seeming large now is kind of, well, we needed it to be a large enough number for it to make sense for us to go through this process, otherwise we say, we'll figure it out with the county. It's large enough, oh, that might be a benefit to the city, so.
So something that that I've been having a a challenging time with with this, um and and I am certainly not the housing expert on this this panel. Um but, you know, we uh, but but even, you know, there are some statistics in in the report, the staff report in our packet. You know, it's it's really, it's really challenging to to go against in any way, shape or form, something that that's presented as workforce housing. Because we have such a need in this community, but I, but I do have a concern that, you know, we as a council have seen hundreds of units either being completed in the last few months, and I'm extending that into the county, but also come before us that that have this sort of same package, they're they're apartments, they're one and two and three bedroom units. You know, I I I have a concern and and I, again, I'm not, I'm not the expert and so I don't know how the numbers are generated where like, you know, we have this goal of of achieving nine hundred and fifty-two units and by twenty thirty. To me, the the hundreds of units that that are coming on that really have this sort of same um presentation to the community. I I I I have some concerns with with how that will affect, you know, the the broader market, you know, to Ellen's uh wonderful projects that we're seeing, you know, and I, without seeing that, I, so that that's, that's really informing mine, you know, to me, I I'm thinking do we, do we wanna put this kind of density on this these neighbors? If, you know, when when there are some, to me, some unknowns of of, you know, where we're going in our trajectory with with the housing that we're building. And I know there are people who are, you know, Caitlin is one of them, who are putting a lot of thought into exactly the product that's gonna serve this community the best at this given time with what's coming online and what's in the pipeline. But again, you know, we've even tonight, we're looking at, you know, uh what, seventy some units that, you know, in in addition to, you know, literally hundreds of units, a couple hundred units that have come online or coming online very, very soon. It just gives me a little bit of pause of, you know, if we wanna do this to to this quiet little neighborhood. You know, and again, going against workforce housing is something that, you know, I think we're all very, very hesitant to do. So I, what what are your thoughts on that, Cory?
Yeah, tha- thank you for, that's a great, kind of almost rhetorical statement, but uh as a question, it's really helpful for me as a platform. I think there's two things I'm hearing, which is, I think perfectly where we're at, again, looking back to our process, is we have in no way entitled this project, we just simply said, we're willing to entertain your project under these conditions. We'll look at that through this process, so we're asking the right questions at the right time through the rest of this. Which is where maybe some of that question is kind of directed to council, as this is not a, you know, this is a a uh property owner petition to annexation. We did not, the staff did not propose this, the property owner said, I see my current situation with the county and their development standards isn't making sense for us, we want to come to the city and develop under these standards. So at this point, we're we're looking at more feasibility capacities under the terms of preannexation. So that first section of the question, I think, is great to the rhetorical element of the council, is this, is this what we want and where we want it? Given the the preannexation in form. To the second point of the actual specifics of housing, I would, barring a couple conversations that I don't have, I've had really recently about a couple new product formats, we haven't actually seen something I would say is very similar to this. I think when I, when I'm referencing, and it's very um casual, is this tiny home type-esque, it's gonna be stick built, it will be, but that's essentially what we're seeing is a, a, a unit that is stacked of living space with a a parking aside next to it, so it's not a a trailer park by any means, but um when we're talking about the other products, apartment housing or economies or even rental townhomes, we're not seeing a project, I think, right now on our books that looks like this. So that's to say, is it a, is a, you know, a one bedroom or studio flat type, small square footage space um going to detract from the other numbers we're seeing? I would, I would argue we're in enough of a deficit, no, I don't believe we would be, and I think we have enough of a built in deficit of our growth pattern, even satisfying our existing deficit, we'll have built in deficit of our economic expansions. Had a long discussion about that today with some other developers. Um so short answer is, I don't, I don't think this detracts from our existing developments or even proposing developments. I think what you're on to is, if we're beginning to see a monocrop, if you will, of the same types of units, two bedroom, one bathroom in an apartment format over and over and over again, yes, I would say that's art. Is that what we wanna see here? I don't believe that's the product you're actually getting in this location, I think this is kind of lending itself nicely to almost the best version of a multi household development and a quiet street environment. Because you're gonna have individually occupied units with some ownership-esque elements to them, some some space. Versus if we were to say, oh, we're gonna put a consolidated apartment block here, that is maybe, I think, kind of more acute to what you're saying. Is if we put an apartment building here, is that categorically standard with the street and the flow capacities of that, that, that um quality of life down there? So I'm not seeing this, in my opinion, verging on that quality of life down there, I think it's actually is the, one of the most appropriate versions of what you could have seen out of something like this. That's who, you know, we, like, I think Michael said it nicely, we don't have governance over how those twenty units manifest. That's what this developer is planning to do, he could come back and say, it's a block unit, so that is a risk. It is not rhetorical, that's a good risk, and understanding where we're going with this. But um I I think, I don't know, with Michael, how we're looking at River Sands generally, we feel, you know, twenty units versus the commercial entities, how that is really gonna tip that property over or not, that's up to you guys, your your constituencies and your understanding, but I, from a planning tech perspective, don't believe it's putting us into a level of service in that area that is deficient.
And there's no A M I associated with this, so this is all market value. So it's not like the affordable, like we're talking about out on Mill Creek that we'll be talking about later, or what Caitlin's doing out at Arroyo. So it is market rate housing.
And I guess I compare it to the the cottages, you know. That I think it's a similar product.
So.
I have a thought too, but you go.
Yeah, I just, just try, and we'll maybe close up staff, hopefully with this. But uh the the council is in a position where you can decide whether or not to continue to evaluate this or not. You you wanna be adopting this annexation or approving the annexation tonight, but if you do move forward, you're kind of signaling that, yeah, we wanna put these people through the process, have them go through this whole thing, because we think it might be likely. Uh so if it's not likely, now's a good time to to really talk about it like you're doing. After the annexation happens, just like after the annexation happened tonight with Ellen's property, then free market basically takes over. And at that point, uh you really don't have a lot of control over, you know, exactly what happens there, you get to see, we get to designate density, we get to designate lots of health and safety things, we get to designate several other things. But if your concern is that that density isn't right for this property, then the the action that I would suggest is to to not move forward. Um because if you do move forward, that's the density that would be allowed there, and that's the density that was agreed to with the property owners previously. So.
Thanks, Michael, that explanation.
Yeah, and I I, so as we were, I was listening, but also just thinking about, you know, is this actually a quiet area? It it is a quiet area. Um but actually looking at and thinking about what's actually there. And it's really interesting, because on one side you have rural residential, you have a lot of agriculture that hasn't been developed yet. But um, you know, as Mob continues to grow, that is the trajectory. Not saying that's going to happen or not, but more so, um this area is adjacent to R three, even if you wanted to pull back up that map. You know, there's, so not only is there, so there's the R three kind of behind where we are with um Orchard Villa, Entrada's right there, that's C two, that's high density. Cora, Cora Villa is right there, that's R four. Um R four for a multi household for threeplex or graders, eighteen hundred square feet. So that's also a quiet but very dense neighborhood, and then you have Grand Oasis, which is also a very quiet but dense neighborhood. Um and I think especially with those two, you know, my my bigger challenge with with this is thinking about infrastructure in the road and um kind of connectivity, once you start getting back there. But I think that's gonna be a challenge regardless. But I think when I'm actually looking at and thinking about density, like this is actually like a very surprisingly quiet but very dense part of Moab City. So, a- and and I think also if we were to go back on zoning, I did also just double check this. Effectively, if if we weren't um going with this split zone route, if we said we just wanted to do R two, um that would effectively remove the, like, you couldn't do the laundry facility. Um that use would be eliminated if if we just did residential, so, so it's kind of decision as well to not do the art.
We could leave that parcel, couldn't you?
It's uh currently one parcel, so as a part of this, they would have to go through a minor subdivision to separate the laundry from the the north sectional lot, which would be the residential side. Um so, so it's not to say you couldn't, if we were to go back in time and restart, you just changed it from R three to R two. In theory, you could generate a similar agreement that did that, but that's not what we have, so it's kind of up to the temperature of the applicants that they'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, no, you're good, but yeah, I mean, just kind of like looking at those, um you know, we have R three on the very top and then we have an S L R lot, I mean, there there's no, even for this to go S L R with how small the parcel is, s- small residential in the county, um you'd only be able to do four units there, if this stayed in the county, if we decided to not not move forward and they stayed in the county and rezoned.
Might actually say you might not even be able to, uh R R is one acre, one lot minimums. So depending on how that organizes, you might.
Right.
But I guess the sub subdivision process, we'd have to go through.
Um and and so I guess, so yeah, I and I can speculate on that, but I think me actually looking at it while we have so much like agriculture and we have those parcels right there that are rural residential, I think, when I've been reviewing it, and I feel like I I also pulled up our, my notes from the meeting where we approved pre- preannexation and I mean, I I I think, infrastructure aside, looking at the type of housing that's in that area, I I think that this project is actually really in alignment with um manufactured mobile homes and like smaller kind of neighborhoods that are around there, so. So yeah, I I see, I I see both sides, it's kind of a clashing of quietly high density housing with agricultural like very low density, um so it's, I do think it's kind of a a decision point. Um if 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 this annex is in, it's continuing to um kind of further that that trend that we've seen is kind of my take on it, but.
One additional note, it was, it's kind of been overlooked, and it's a bit of a forecast, if we look actually at our zoning map here, if you look to the north of River Sands, there is actually a property that's addressed, or two rather, that are addressed off of this that are in the R three, I believe that is correct. Um so if we're looking at that run of the east side of the street, it it could be in place that 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 actually is contiguous upon a future. Uh it's it's not, you know, obviously right now, but filling in the blanks, if you will.
Do you know, do you know when that happened or?
No, um that's pretty odd, it's obscure.
One at the end.
Yeah.
On the north side, three.
I think.
One was, I do remember talking to a property owner, there was a petition that their lot was not performing, it was, I believe, a trailer in the county, sorry, anecdotally. The trailer, they were needing to replace it because it was in bad condition and the county would not let them replace it because it didn't meet their standards. So they couldn't expand the legal nonconforming use, even though it was just a replacement of the trailer, so I think that was the narrative around one of those properties coming to the city is to allow them to replace their trailer without kind of getting away from the nonconforming status that was in the county R R.
So you said one thing that kind of stuck with me, um that if we approve this, that eventually gets approved as an R three. The property owner could scrap um the conceptual idea and put in apartment buildings.
Like. Or a a a building that has twenty units.
One building.
Density effectively wouldn't, so if form based is a factor, that's something, you know.
That that could be up to forty feet, right? I mean, in R three.
Top, forty feet in height?
Yeah.
No.
Thirty-five feet or?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Thirty-five, yeah, okay.
So that's.
We definitely could push back, but but you are, you are correct in being, uh if, I mean, if that's concerning to you, that was the time to bring it up because I.
It is.
Potentially could have.
Yeah, absolutely is.
Could happen on the other R three property there also.
Yeah, it could.
It could, and I guess um for me, there's two, two concerns I have is, is, you know, the you know, like, and one thing I wanted to ask is, when we talked about this last time, did we have a conceptual map presented to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um. Is, you know, like, if, if those units don't fit, you know, um. Then can the project be reduced, you know, to sixteen units or something like that still, and which, which I think.
Yeah.
Um, you know, could make it a better, you know, pill to swallow, you know, and stuff on this. Um, but for me, it kind of, that, something that really concerns me is. I don't want the city to own that road, you know, um, I, that, that's something that's super concerning to me because, um, you have. And, and again, this goes back to property taxes and us being able to maintain this with funds coming in. You know, there's not a whole lot of funds coming in to maintain that really long road with all that infrastructure for. Um, residents who, um, you know, are county residents.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Isn't there some sort of formula like as more development occurs and as we like take in more. Uh, like property like within, like the city region that like, we don't have to go through a true, true taxation, my process like. Our ability to generate some more like tax revenues increases.
Based on more development.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, this. I was, that's a good point. We do own part of the road already. The, the first two properties there, it looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Are incorporated in the road. We would have been taking over the rest of the road.
Yeah, um, and, and yeah, I think in this, I think to, to that point of it, it being a burden on the city is that, I think this is. The way our city has evolved in its annexation bound, or excuse me, our city limit boundaries. Have kind of already set the stage. We're, we're bearing the burden of those decisions in the past. I, it's my belief, at least the way we should be executing our exit policies, this will be a city road at some point. Um, so that, it's not the question of whether there will be a city road or not, it's whether it will be sooner or later, I think is my personal opinion on. How we're gonna approach annexation. Um, for all the reasons Mike said, continuity of services, I mean, that is the premier. Element, but I, I think with, I'm kind of looking back to our engineering department, who may, they're not gonna be able to speak to this, but the way the funding is, the way our, our, um. Uh, Bill Jackson with Rhodes in the county, when we engaged in those original discussions, it was, it was quite a ways back and Michael's pretty hands on with that. Is, well, you have to improve the road before we annex it and that this was a whole series of discussions we had, but that's not.
That went nowhere.
It's gonna go nowhere. And so I think the, the impression that we'll ever get that up to a standard where we can just inherit it and it works, I think we're. Not gonna see that likely.
Uh, I don't see the county investing in this road.
Yeah, and I think like, I definitely understand the concerns of bringing. A more high density into an area that already has a lot of density, like. There's a lot of traffic that goes up and down that road, but a lot of it doesn't really move past like the Entrada. And like, so we're kind of bringing that a little bit more down. Um, cause Entrada, that's where a lot of like the UTV like renters come in. And so I, I know. A lot of people view that as like one of the last remaining like really quiet spots in Moab. Um, and like, that's definitely something that I'd like to preserve. Uh, my concern is that like, it's a little off the map there, but that like, kind of purple pink area is. Industrial zone. And so like, I was looking at the things that are allowed over there. And so we have like asphalt and concrete mixing plants, automobile wrecking and salvage yards. Breweries, coal yards, removing equipment.
Train depot is on there. So is water reclamation facility. Which really stinks, but.
Yeah. And there's also like that weird little industrial island there that. But like, I think like the fact that it is like a hodgepodge, like. It makes it that much more challenging where I, there is the potential to kind of like expand off of that. Um, bring like heavier equipment. I think ultimately I have uses that would be more disturbing. I can't remember, we had that one. It was the storage units, like we ended up adding that to industrial.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, was, it was amended. Uh, they ultimately moved away from that product. It's actually going through the process right now for something different. Uh, for that property, but.
But it's still zoned industrial.
Yes, yeah, it still is, yep.
Isn't there a kennel?
Kennels. Very odd kennel.
No, I believe that one was not amended, yeah.
So, so what would prevent it from being C two? So we're accommodating C two to, um. To accommodate the, um, the laundry mat. Um, but so, but also if that laundry mat goes away, it's still C two and anything under C two.
A restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, so. Is there like a way, which I don't think we want a restaurant down there or whatever, or anything that goes into C two? Is there a way to like zone it all, zone it all R three and put a laundry mat as a non-conforming use in there?
I don't believe at this point.
So that if it goes away, you know, we're not stuck with whatever it can be in C three. What you can do, I mean, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be creating non-conforming uses, annexing parcels, properties that are non-conforming, I think. Um, just as a practice, but I also think we're not supposed to do that either.
No, but.
Yeah. But one thing you could look at, and this is going way out there is, is to add. To amend the, the ordinance, R three to, to add that use to the R three, but then it's added to the R three everywhere.
Right.
So, so it's, I mean, it's a. It's a, I guess, say it's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
I.
I think like with it being basically isolated in there, any sort of commercial use, like. Unless it was some sort of like outfitter or something like that, I think like its best use would be to cater to that like small area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just cause it is so like tucked away from like everything else, um, that I don't necessarily know that it would be some sort of. Uh, use that would be like driving additional traffic into a, a very tightly packed community already. Um, but I mean, then again, like you never know, like. Use my phrase, use my right.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't there already a laundry there?
There, there is, which is hence, hence the C two, um, in, in theory with the existing structure, I think to your point, well, it could be something else, it could. But given the existing structure, we'd likely see an infill or transitional use that complements what the existing. Uh, impacts on that, that site would be, you probably would see variability of a much. Lesser impact or a much greater impact. It's probably housed the way it's gonna be housed.
But that laundry facility is not like a public laundry facility.
No, I believe it's a contract.
It's not a public laundry, not like.
It's a commercial.
Commercial laundry.
Yeah, which is a, a need in this town.
Yeah.
Actually.
Yeah.
Or the hotels and hospitals.
They, the current ownership group, because I believe there's two, have, have no intent in removing that use. Um, that was kind of the whole carve out is they just wanted that to be able to continue and definitely as long as that business is doing well. Um, anything could happen, you know, that's something we're throwing out, but.
Well, one thing that, um. Summer, did they have to make a decision tonight on whether to accept it or could they, they have to make a decision tonight? Make them, I'm ready to make a motion.
Is any other questions for staff?
Um, yes. One, and, and I think we talked about this last time too, but, um. Because we're annexing and there's no concern about creating like a zoning island with the C two. Um. We have more discretion than that, or?
There. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting question because yeah, you kind of are, but it's already there. It's already been, it's already been created. Um, it's already has been created. Uh, so no, there weren't concerns with that when we went through the pre-annexation.
Yeah.
And there, there's other commercial operations on the street that are consistent. Um, but, uh, no, it wasn't.
Thanks. Okay.
Able to extend, but this, uh. I move that the Moab City Council deny the petition for annexation for property located at four eighty six River Sands Road. Moab, Utah, eight four five three two.
Motion by Colin, second. All right, motion dies for the lack of a second.
Oh, I, I have a quick question. How, like, how long is our agreement like in effect? Is it basically like if we ever annex this into the city, like. We are bound by, I believe there's some defaulting standards there.
So the motion has failed at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll look this up. Sorry.
Hold on.
Yeah, and I'm certain. Nathan, if you want to sign in and answer this quicker.
I'm, I'm pulling it up now. Um, I don't think we had this agreement in the packet.
No, it is. I pulled it up from the agenda.
Maybe I'm missing it in the.
Annexation going to be binding upon all successors and the signs of property owner in ownership or development of any portion of the property. Um, term of extension.
Maybe while we're reading, I, there was one additional element, it didn't really naturally come up. Uh, something when we are looking in these areas, mostly on the peripheral of our city boundaries, not so much in these peninsula areas, but. It's even more heightened, I think, in these areas is I think, and, and that, again, an inevitability of these is. It will develop in a, in a way, you know, Jurassic Park, life will find a way here. It, it will. So when we're seeing that, especially on the periphery, it's a concern of mine, absolutely wanting to coordinate with counties, if we're seeing larger, this not really. Hitting my radar is one of those, developing the county on the county standards that we are very imminently going to annex, we would be annexing in. To that point, if very likely non-conforming in a variable number of ways. So having the city opportunity to have these areas that will very likely come in city jurisdiction at some point, built in our standards. Is a major benefit to us long-term as well as the property owners, but it, that's not to say that's a determining factor, but it is one of those, again, um.
Did you find?
So, yeah, so Nathan, I'm looking at, uh, section thirteen. And I'm speaking with the city attorney, Kason, who's wondering who's Nathan is. He's on, he's on Zoom. Um, and it appears to me that the agreement is to run with the land and is binding on all successors, which. Uh, to me, unless there's something else to the contrary, says that it's indefinite.
No, it, it, there's the language, if, if this is, we, we have language about decision on the petition. Which the city shall make, use all reasonable methods to either approve or reject the petition as soon as reasonably practical. So the city will have fulfilled its obligations by, if it's going to reject the petition. Then, then the, as far as I'm concerned, the agreement has terminated because the city's fulfilled its obligation.
Okay.
Say that the city has to, we, 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 we agreed to process a, a petition and act on it. And we have, and we, when we've done that, our obligations under this are, are, are completed.
Was, was the nature of the question, if it were annexed, how long do they have to?
No, I think the question is if it's not, like in three years, will this agreement still be good? It depends on the action you take tonight according to our city attorney.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, do I have another motion? Caitlin.
All motion that the Moab City Council accepts the petition for annexation for property located at four eighty six River Sands Road. Moab, Utah, eight four five three two.
Motion by Caitlin, second.
Oh, second.
Second by Luke, discussion Caitlin.
Um, appreciate the conversation, also really appreciate the comments from the public on this, um. You know, I think this seems to have been a very important lesson for all of us about the importance of pre-annexation. Agreements. Um. But, yeah, that's. I'll do it then.
No, not really. I mean, I, I think like we've covered kind of everything. And yeah, it, I don't necessarily like that, there is the possibility of. The form changing, but like that is something that I, like, we kind of stepped into like when we made that agreement and like. I don't know. Don't always want to just like leave things up to like the good choices of like others, but, um, this does sound like a really. Interesting and novel project to build into the community. Um, and there is a part of me that kind of likes the. Little experiments to see like how things like work out and see what type of units might be possible. So it'd be great if like. As envisioned is something that, or similar to it, uh, is something that moves forward, uh, but, yeah.
Anybody else?
You know, for me, I. I think this is a good project, um. I just, um, and I think it could do on housing. It's pretty funny, I, I, I. I'm very, very, very familiar with this property and, um, and I used to joke around with the neighbors and be like. You could have an apartment building here, but you have me, you know, and stuff and, um. And it's kind of coming to fruition, you know, that, um, that, that this could happen, you know, and stuff and, um. And, and, you know, as things progress, these are things that kind of come up. And I think that, um. You know, the Bisco's, um, are, are great people and the Birds are great people and that they will do a, a good project. You know, what, what scares me is if it gets, um, moved to something else that, and that, that's what scares me on this. Um, the other part that, that I, um, that, that I don't like, which I voice my opinion is, is that. Um. I think it's, it's gonna be a burden on tact, on taxpayers, um, to, to redo that road. That road is super narrow. Um, there's no curb and gutter, it's gonna be very expensive and I don't think it's appropriate for. Um. The Moab City General, you know, CIP funds, you know, going to, to do this for a, a few lots. You know, where it is right now. So I'd like to see a, a more, um. Broader annexation, you know, for, for doing something like this, to take care of that road. And so that's kind of where, where I'm at on this, on this project.
Anybody else? All right, we've got a motion to accept the. Um. The petition for annexation for property located at four eighty six River Sands Road, Moab, Utah, eight four five three two. Motion made by Caitlin, seconded by Luke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Roll call, Caitlin.
Aye.
Colin.
Nate.
Connie.
Aye.
Luke. Jason. Motion passes three, two. With, um, Colin and Jason in opposition. Thank you, more to come.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, consideration of a change order in the amount of seventy one thousand. Five dollars and eighty cents for the stabilization of Mill Creek at five hundred West Project. This project is already completed. This is a change order that's, um, already happened. We just need to approve. The funding, the budget for this will come out of the insurance claim for the flooding. And also through our capital improvement project. So Mark?
Okadox, let's get our, uh. Okay, so just so we all know where we're talking about, uh, this project was located at the Fifth Street Bridge over Mill Creek. Uh, which we're just showing real quick here, just for context. Um, and I'll, I'll go into a little bit of background here. I think that's probably where we'll go with this. Uh. Um, so when we originally, uh, imagined this project, it was, uh, simply an armoring project. We were gonna. Put rip rap around the bridge, well, I shouldn't say simply an armoring project, around the bridge, it was simply an armoring project with some sediment removal. Uh, there was also some additional sediment removal on, on some private property and some other improvements, uh, to the path nearby. Uh, those ended up not happening for other reasons, so, um, actually that's included in this change order as well as removal of those things. Uh, from the project. Um, uh, and so. Without getting too much in the weeds, though, I'd be more than happy to get in the weeds if you all have questions about that, council has questions about that. Uh, there was a portion of the project that was removed off of a private property and from where the path is. Um, the biggest impacts, however, uh, uh, to the increase in the contract cost. Came from, uh, our discovering a concrete mat under the bridge.
Is that what that is?
So that's, yeah, exactly. So that's what's shown in that photo.
Yeah. They all have them. We've figured out, so.
So, uh, yeah, so this was installed, uh, we think around two thousand, year two thousand. And, uh, and then just simply forgotten about over the years. It was sedimented over, uh, and we didn't know that it was there. Uh, we don't have these typically under our bridges, so this one was just kind of an odd, the odd duck there. Uh, so upon discovering it, uh, a little bit lower than actually the finished grade on the rip rap that we were going to install. So upon discovering it a little bit lower than actually the finished grade on the riprap that we were going to install, that brought the finished grade on everything further down. We didn't want to just put rep rap over the concrete. We kind of wanted to play with what we had there. And so we had to very quickly redesign the entire project, which was, I believe, successfully done. We brought the finished grade down to the, to the surface of the existing concrete. That meant that we had to reshape the stream up and downstream, mostly upstream, which is where our additional costs came from. We ended up just having to remove a whole lot more dirt. Also involved in that was that there was a water pipe that was installed there. I believe after the concrete, I think, went in, is the way that happened. And I can only speculate here that it was installed after that concrete pad had been sedimented in significantly because they did not run the water line particularly deep, which meant that when we went to regrade out upstream of the mat, we had to be careful not to expose the water pipe. So we were very careful to grade the riprap such that it is protecting that water line a little bit. In the future, that line will probably have to be replaced as shallow as it is, but, but we think it's, it's sufficiently protected right now. And so we did, I think, a total of four change orders. One of those was, actually, can we go to the breakdown you have of that? We did one that was initially a small change order, which we did not bring to council because this one fell within our limits of an administrative change order for potholing for the, for the water line that was shallow. We had to locate it so that we weren't going to hit it in our regrading. And then another change order for some nearby, we'll call it relevant sort of improvements. At the time, we opted to go in and finalize removal of the pedestrian bridge abutments that are along that corridor there. One, that's the Confluence Bridge that was there. We had left the abutments when we pulled the bridges. So we thought, okay, let's just get those out. And another one down there, that bridge also came out. So that was just finishing up some old work. We had a contractor out there. So we opted to have them do that while they were mobilized out. At this point, we were still under our administrative limit for doing that. Meanwhile, we were going through the process of having to redesign the project on the fly and get something that worked with the water line and that regraded into the surrounding bank and the upstream reach of the creek. And we didn't actually have a number for what that was going to be as we were going along. We did some field fitting there because of the issues with the water line and, and, and fitting in with the, the creek. We were also, there were some complications there with our survey and additional floods, and we were kind of in the, in the midst of all that. At the end of the day, we ended up finalizing quantities for that additional sediment removal based on survey. So we were pretty confident on that number. We did, we did that based off of some survey data. And, yeah, and so we ended up surpassing our administrative limit for change orders at that point. I think that covers most of it.
Questions for staff? Motion?
Yes, I do have a question just related to pedestrian bridges. I've received some comments from, yeah, about kind of that section, what happens with pathways, what happens with bridges. Obviously, we've had several conversations about it. I've also had some inquiries about kind of like pathway connectivity through there. I guess I, I don't have a very specific question, but just as, as we're looking at that area, I'm always just wondering like what, what comes next with, with additional water term.
I think that's a conversation for another time because our motion, I mean, I think we will have that conversation, but what we're talking about today is the change order.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yep.
And we, and we do have a, that, our study that we're doing currently, that, that will address that, yeah, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make motion to approve the change order of seventy-one thousand, five dollars and eighty cents for stabilization for Mill Creek at five hundred West Project.
Second.
One second.
Second by Caitlin. Any further discussion, Jason?
Um, no, just the suit jacket.
I, that's what I was gonna say. I was like.
Thank you.
You come in and ask for a million, I was like, yeah. The bar has been raised.
How can you say no now?
I know, you know, whatever you want.
Okay, Jason.
No.
No, no. Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, council.
You look good. Can we take a picture out front under the little?
Yeah.
In the picture frame?
Can I just say that was a really great project that was really good in using our NRCS and trust money to add capacity to that area. And you can see how good it looks as well. And so really proud of that project. There's lots more to do, but definitely they did a really great job.
And that's a perfect example. I remember we've heard that what we do downstream, we need to be careful because it impacts upstream. And so what they had to do, I think, was really important, that we didn't cause any more problems.
Keep water moving through.
Yep. All right, our last discussion item, I'm looking forward to this conversation, is a discussion and consideration of a resolution eleven twenty-two five establishing the Affordable Housing Partnership Policy and Impact Fee Assistance Program to support affordable housing development in Moab. As you know, we started this discussion at our last meeting and we requested that Michael come up with a policy for us. He's worked with some developers, got some input from Caitlin, and now we're gonna have further discussion now. Keep that in mind. We don't have to make a decision this evening if we're not prepared for, if we're not comfortable. And also, if you guys wouldn't mind holding off on your questions until after the presentation, because Michael thinks that a lot of questions you might have be, will be answered in his presentation. And so.
Okay, yeah, but, but before, but I wasn't sure if you, yeah, before Michael starts, I will also be recusing myself from this conversation. So I'll go sit in the audience. And, yeah, recusing myself due to a potential conflict of interest because for my employer's a developer that could benefit from this fund, so.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Although Caitlin has provided input to Michael, so.
Still a partner.
Yes.
Doesn't, doesn't change anything as far as partner or a stakeholder. So just going through this, I want to just go through the policy really quick and just tell you how we developed the policy and, and what we were trying to, to, to get to with the policy. And then also go over some of the comments that I did receive from developers and what they'd like to see and what their, their wish list is, which I think we're pretty close to that, but they have some really valuable information about to make this beneficial and useful, which is what I think we all want. There's no point in doing this unless it's, it's going to be useful, I think. And so putting this together, I put together the framework for it, put together a policy. And then I worked with Nathan. Nathan took it and put it into the ordinance format and added some more things to it, giving it more background and the things that he does. So we will go over this and happy to answer questions at the end, but like I said, I think a lot of the questions, or like the mayor said, a lot of questions you might have are probably going to come up on the two pages that I have from the developers and what their comments were. And then that'll kick us off into, I think, a really good discussion. So this, this policy. Let me go back. So this policy is the Affordable Housing Partnership Policy, and really what it's about is partnering with the people who are building affordable housing within our community and are deeding that affordable housing over as affordable housing for a period of time, fifty years plus. And working with them to, to help to offset some of the costs of development so that they can be more successful and move forward quicker with developing these much needed affordable housing units. This does support the, the goals that the city council has for creating workforce, workforce housing or affordable housing. It establishes a format, and there's two different things we're going to be talking about here. A policy and a format for waiving or reducing impact fees, and we'll put those together as one, or offering no interest loans to developers who are developing affordable housing to offset impact fees. So those are the two things we're talking about. The, and then also it, it, we're seeking to balance the need for affordable housing, but also not lose track of the fact that we, it could be easy to say, oh, well, we can make it easier on you by cutting back the impact fees, but that does not change the fact that they will still have impacts on our sewer, water, storm drain, streets, all those different kinds of things. So it, it helps to bring all of those things into view when considering entering into agreements with developers in partnership. So the legal framework, the state says that we can make codes like this within our community. Our codes in chapter thirteen in the municipal code, which is the impact fee chapter, and we're gonna specifically refer to thirteen twenty-two five, which is water impact fees, and chapter seventeen, which is the assured workforce housing. Those two chapters are what we're, we're kind of basing this policy off of and the things that are within those chapters. So in chapter thirteen, it does say that you can reduce impact fees for affordable housing units, although it doesn't give you any criteria or anything like that. It just has this one criteria and some, a few others. But related to affordable housing, this is what it said. You can reduce those impact fees. The housing fund can be a source for those to put towards the development of affordable housing. So as we're talking about this and we're offsetting impact fees and we're, we're acknowledging that the impacts are still there. What I talked about in the last meeting was using funds that the city has to offset the developers' costs, which will then help them move forward quicker and will be our partnership effort in, in developing affordable housing. And that money can come from the housing fund. There is a requirement within the housing fund or the assured workforce housing where developers of hotels need to put money towards housing units for the, the properties that they develop. And there's also an opportunity to do what's called a fee in lieu of construction. And a big part of our housing fund comes from that fee in lieu of just construction and otherwise known as the, the WAHU, the Workforce Assured Housing. Just threw an O or a U on it.
Say that with more enthusiasm?
No. So, and the reason why is because I'm tentative about that. It's because it's actually the assured workforce housing. It's in a totally different order in the actual code. So it's kind of hard to say, actually. So this policy also creates the criteria and the process. And what the criterion process will do is make it so that it's transparent and uniform. When the city council is reviewing these requests for waivers, they'll review them on the same playing field for, for everyone. And if you meet the criteria, you do. If you don't, you don't. And that, it'll make it a lot simpler than just having a section of code that says you can, if you want, waive impact fees for these types of uses. So getting into the actual meat of it, we are establishing some eligibility requirements, which means the project needs to be within the city. It needs to be designated as affordable housing indeed for at least fifty years. And that follows pretty much Lytec, which is a fifty-five year dedication. And the units need to be between forty and eighty percent AMI. Lytec says, I know the one we're dealing with, and I know a lot of people know a lot more about this than I do, but the average for the one that prompted this was sixty percent AMI through all the units. But we can, we can definitely mess around with that and get it to the right place where you want. But certainly forty to eighty percent area median income is affordable, is in the affordable range. And the developers need to be in good standing. We need to be working with people that we trust and that are, are currently in good standing, the property being in good standing as well. So the funding tool is we can either do fee waivers, fee reductions, or no interest loans. Now, fee waivers would be just, that's everything, just complete or partial forgiveness. You're, you're just wiping it off the books. They're never going to owe it. And proportional adjustments or fee reductions kind of fit in that too, which is kind of the partial forgiveness or proportional adjustments. Pretty much similar things where you can say, okay, we're gonna waive a hundred percent of that so you can move forward and take those fees off of the books for you. So you can develop this affordable housing, or we're gonna do fifty percent of it to help for you to move forward and, and support affordable housing. So those are those two. And I, I put those two together because you are, you are waiving either a portion or all of the fees. And then the other portion, which came up in the meeting that we had two weeks ago, which I thought was great, a good discussion about, well, how do we continue this program moving forward if we give all the money away, like, right now? And that's the revolving loan fund. So if we were to create a revolving loan, which is mainly what this policy is about, we are, we need to come up with some criteria for that. And so there'd be a no interest loan, there'd be a period of time, it'd be up to a certain amount. And, and there, and there would be a contract that went with that. But the funding tools would either be wiping it off the books or a no interest loan that would be paid back over a period of time. The safeguards would be that there has to be a certain amount of money, and this is my suggestion. There has to be a certain amount of money within the housing fund to even consider this. And so if somebody came in and said, we want to apply for two hundred thousand, which is the max, according to the policy, if it were to get approved that way, can we apply for that? Is there enough money in the housing fund to do that? Well, a simple calculation would be, well, there has to be plenty of money in there because this housing fund does other things as well. So what does that mean? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there? We're leaving fifty thousand in there? I just came up with, there has to be twice the loan amount within the, within the fund to entertain the the request. So if they came in and there was only two hundred thousand dollars in there, you'd say, well, no, we can't do that because there's only two hundred thousand. We could entertain a, a potential loan for up to a hundred thousand dollars. That would leave a hundred thousand dollars within the, the housing fund that could be used for other uses, and we're not completely depleting that fund. There's probably a million different ways to go about doing this. This is just a simple way that I put out there for consideration. The safe, the other safeguards would be the recorded deeds on the property, which I said was about fifty years. Not about, it would have to be a minimum of fifty years, about fifty-five with Lytec is what it ends up being. So as far as review, there would be a process that someone would come in and they, they make their justification to staff. They'd show proof that they are providing affordable housing, that they have an intent to go through with the Lytec project, which requires a fifty-five year deed restriction, or they're going to do a deed restriction all on their own and just, just make it so without having that financing requirement. So next step we'd go to is we would review it as staff. We'd make a recommendation to the city council on the waivers or reductions. And if the council were to approve the policy that, that we've put forward, loans would be reviewed by the city manager and would be approved or denied based on the criteria that already exists. So it would, it's one of the things we're gonna talk about with what the developers ask for is don't make it too burdensome for us. Help us move forward through this process quickly and don't put more, more processes in our way. So that would be like, if you agree with the criteria and someone comes in and meets those, why go through another discretionary process when they meet all the criteria? And, and that way, the city manager could approve the loan based on the criteria and enter into the contract with them. And of course, if it's, I mean, the council has to approve the budget allocation and things like that anyway. So the council definitely would be involved regardless. The city council action would be step three, in the cases where it was required, you'd either approve or deny the, the application and make sure it aligns with the goals and that there's enough money in the balance and all those different types of things. So as far as oversight, we would have contracts that would be required for all loans, which, or waivers. I don't know exactly what we would get with the waiver except for the contract would be that you're gonna do the fifty-five years, you know, or the fifty years, that kind of stuff. But it wouldn't be for repayment, obviously, because there would be no repayment for a waiver. Each of these contracts could be different. And that's one of the challenges with this whole thing is talking to different developers. Different developers have different ideas of what's going to be helpful and useful for repayment. They all agree on one thing, which is waivers are much better than having to repay. So just getting rid of the fees altogether is. So just getting rid of the fees altogether is preferable, but we have one developer who says. We can't pay it back sooner than five years because we have to have cash flow and all this kind of stuff. Another developer that says, well, same, same story for us, but it's nineteen years. So, it's a little bit of a, a gap in there. It's a big range. So that's something we'll be talking about. But it would be different, it could be different or maybe different with each project. It could be, there could be a range where it's a minimum of five, no more than ten or something like that. And um, as long as they fit in with that range, uh, it would be something that we could just include in the contract. And for some it'd be five and some it might be seven or eight or ten. So administration, it would be managed by my department. And we would have standardized form, standardized forms, applications, templates, all that kind of stuff. So that it would be transparent, it would look the same for every developer. And we'd have the same information for every developer that came through and was making the request. And then there would be an annual review or however often you want to do that. Where we would report on the, the success of the policy to the council. And make sure that it's still continuing to align with the, the goals that you have and the fiscal goals especially because. Let's say there is no more money left in the housing fund. Do you want to move this to the general fund? Or do you want to just say until there's money, we're not gonna do this or we're just gonna stop doing this altogether? So I do think it would be appropriate to review it yearly because things could change quickly on, on a policy like this, especially with funds. Okay, so the last couple of things to go over is just the feedback from the stakeholders. Like I said, the most beneficial thing for them would be to waive, just waive the fees because that would move them. Uh, forward the fastest and have the highest impact. The next best thing would be no interest loans. Uh, one of them said that they would need at least five-year repayment period. The other one says it would need to be three years for construction, sixteen for operations to ensure that they continue to have the cash flow. And um, and doing something different would affect them. Because the cash flow is important for the other loans that they have, Lytech being the, probably the biggest one that they have. Um, or the credits, uh, and then other financing that goes with that. And then um, also being able to do maintenance and things like that on the property going forward. Uh, so those are the things that they're bringing up. Um, they did bring up the possibility of adding forgiveness, uh, for instance. Uh, the council could at some point, if you wanted to, you could write into the agreement that uh, they could petition for forgiveness. Of the, of the loan at a certain point where it would then become a waiver. It could be before they started paying it back. It could be like student loans after you make a hundred and twenty payments. If you work for nonprofits and stuff. It could be a lot of, it could be several different things, not a hundred and twenty payments. That's just how the student loan thing works. But you could come up with a criteria like that if that's something you wanted to consider. But that was brought up and so I wanted to make sure it was brought up here as well. They wanna make sure that it, it, it doesn't become so burdensome that it makes it so they have to go through more processes. And it takes more time, they have more legal costs, they have more planning to do and different things like that. And the, the point is that it can offset the benefits. We'd have unintended consequences to this great program we're trying to do. But it takes so long and it's a little bit more burdensome, uh, which puts the developers off from using it. And um, and we wanna make sure this is successful. So bringing that up. And the overall goal, according to them, and I think for us too, is it should be efficient, it should be predictable. It should be friendly and it should attract and retain affordable housing projects in Moab. And I think we all can agree on that. I think it's, it's a different, it's a sliding scale or it's kind of relative what. Developer friendly means depending on where you're standing or where you're sitting. But I think the last part there, um, or the, the first part process. It should be efficient, predictable and ta- attract, retain affordable housing projects in Moab. Think those we can all agree with. Um, and then these are just the follow-up to those main things, which is let's avoid the added bureaucracy. Um, there is another alternative to deed restrictions, which is. I think it's Utah Housing Coalition has agreements that they um, go through a different process but are still binding. And that's something we can look more into and just, that's something that they brought up. Because some of the developers actually use these with some of the other projects that they do. And the, the groups that they're working with require that, uh, as opposed to a deed restriction. The uh, the real world example was from one of the developers and they did. They did give a little bit more information, but I didn't think it was appropriate to share all of it. So I just narrowed it down to this. The full waiver equals cash flow improvement. And they get to use that money going forward for um, financial feasibility of the project. Making it more feasible that the project's going to happen in the first place. And then using that money for property maintenance in the first several years of the project. The low interest loan, they're still interested in it, or the no interest loan, sorry. And we can talk about low interest as well. If we're gonna go out so far, I would recommend that we do look at interest. But the no interest loan, they think would still be helpful. But they want the payment to be as long as possible again for the cash flow. And then this is, this is a given, this is not even uh, debatable or negotiable. We would not be in first place on these loans. If we are recording liens against the property. We would be subordinate to senior financing and all the other things that go before that. So if they were to default and they would go through this process, the other creditors would get paid back first. And then it would come down to us, but we would probably be, be one of the smaller creditors. And considering everything that they're looking at. So that's pretty much the, the policy. I'd love to have a discussion with you and get your um, direction, feedback and how you wanna move forward with this or what you'd like to do.
So what happens if they default just on the waiver? And not anything else?
So that would be, that would be a legal question that um, I believe. Nathan could answer.
Yeah, so one of the things that we put in this agreement, well, we didn't have a lot of time, but you'll see in the, the resolve clause is that. You know, the staff will develop agreements. And so one of the things we could potentially do is we could include a, a liquidated damages. Uh, provision in the agreement that if they default or don't comply with their affordable housing obligations, that we have some sort of recourse. But my, my initial thinking is that we would deal with that through the agreement that will have them signed as a condition of getting the waiver.
We would just carry, we would continue to have a lien against the property. So if they ever were to refinance or sell or anything like that. It would cloud up title, right?
Yeah, we could do that too. Um, but I sometimes, I like to have liquidated damages too. It's like, hey, you took money out of this fund and. You don't comply with your terms of the deal. Uh, now, of course, the problem you have there is if the project goes belly up and that's where the lien would come into play.
Right. So a couple of options there. I mean, it, it is something to consider. It could happen, for sure.
At, at what point in the development process does, do deed restrictions come into play or when, when are they established?
Well, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do any deed restrictions until you get whatever it is you're giving away for the deed restrictions. So they wouldn't come into play until, say like the credits or the loans or whatever it is. Whatever we're doing here comes into play and they're actually moving forward. If they deed the property, uh, uh, record the deed, it's, the project's moving forward. You know, it's not gonna happen at the beginning of the process. It's gonna happen when they're got everything together, ready to move forward. Closing on loans, things like that and moving forward with construction.
Got it.
And that would be covered under section seven of the policy as part of the contracts and forms section that I was just discussing. And, and that's so each one of these contracts as a condition is going to have a deed restriction there. And we already have a deed restriction form that we use. You've probably seen some of the annexation agreements that were uh, discussed earlier.
Most likely it's happening at closing. As you're closing on all these loans, these, you're signing these deed restrictions at the same time and they're being recorded. At the same time that the loan is, the project's being funded, basically.
Got it.
And that's what I mean by you're not gonna do it until you're getting what you're getting in return. So it happens at closing.
Got it.
Luke.
Is this, or? How do we account for like uh, like mixed income projects? Like if there was a project that was gonna be part affordable and part like market rate. Like, does this account for that? Like, would we potentially?
It does. My suggestion is that it only applies to the impact fees related to the affordable units.
Proportional?
Hmm, yeah, it's proportional.
And then I guess kind of following up on that, um, we currently have the. Uh, affordable housing like defined as between forty to eighty percent, um, like. I guess kind of with that logic, if there were units that were at thirty percent AMI, they wouldn't qualify for that.
That, and that's a, that's a flaw. We'd have to make.
Just be like eighty.
It should be eighty percent or below. That, that's, that is something that we did discuss and then as we're going through, we kind of missed that. But yes, we don't wanna leave out thirty percent by any means, right?
What would? What would the policy be or what would the process be if you had two projects come to you at the same time? And they were asking for a combined, for a combined amount that was more than the allowable. More than is in the fund.
Yeah.
How would we determine who gets priority?
Okay, try it. Probably.
For that.
Probably who, who came in first and who qualified first or, or whosoever's application was first. But that could be written into this.
Yeah.
Most likely, and this is just my opinion, but you know, based on in the developer world, you're not gonna deed over. Fifty years of your project and, and that controls your property for fifty years unless um. Unless you're really serious about doing this. And that wasn't my point. I actually lost track of what I was gonna say, but, but um, it's not going to happen very often. That was my point. So you're not gonna find, it's not gonna happen with every other developer and it's not gonna be worth most developers to, to save two hundred thousand dollars. Or save interest um, by getting a no interest loan um, to, to deed their properties over. It's not gonna be worth it for that much money. They're deeding it for other reasons. They're deeding it because it's part of their financing, it's part of the credits they're getting, or it's just part of who they are, who the, how they operate, their nonprofit. Whatever it is. So I don't see us using this like really often. Uh, because the, the threshold is so high, fifty years is so long to tie up your property. You really have to be dedicated or you have to be getting some other incentives that make it worth it. So I, I do think there's a possibility that we could see two applications at the same time in the next. Little while, to be honest with you, or within close succession with each other. Um, but we could write something into the ordinance that says that, I mean, it should, to be fair, it has probably. Needs to be something along the lines of whoever applies first and is qualified first, but Nathan has it, has his hand raised.
Yeah, so, so this is a policy, it is not a, a new code. And so currently your code in seventeen six nine one ten says. Um, any waiver shall be vested in the discretion of the city council based on the merits of the application and attain the affordability goals of this chapter. So that is the overriding requirement. And so I think we, we could certainly have a, a practice that look, we'll, we'll take them on a first come, first basis. But if you have two competing ones that come in at the same time, I think you could also, I honestly probably are required to say which one of these. Satisfies the goals of chapter seventeen sixty-nine with respect to workforce housing or affordable housing more.
So would it potentially make sense to have like, like quarterly applications or something or like biannual applications? And then that way the council could review, like if there were multiple projects to come in, they can kind of review which one does align more with. Like the councils or cities like priorities. And I think that potentially might give some more flexibility in terms of like the way that we structure things like is. Are we going to give all of the loan money just to one project? Do we split it apart and potentially do waivers or reductions?
Yeah. So I think, again, getting to the point that it's efficient and that it, it doesn't add more burden to the project. I think holding um, holding applications. For a certain amount of time and only review them a couple of times a year might be more burdensome on, on the developers and might turn them off from participating in this. Um, what would be more advantageous, I think, is if this is something you could qualify for. It's easy to, or you could apply for. It's very straightforward. You can apply for it and it'll be re- reviewed at the time that you apply for it based on the criteria. I think it's just incumbent upon us to come up with the right criteria so that we don't end up with zero dollars in the fund. So the next person can't, can't get any of it. Um, so my, the numbers that I put in here are suggestions only. You could, you could go with what other, whatever numbers you like. Right now, the fund balance is, is around four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, not counting what is being budgeted to be spent this year. Uh, so. So two hundred thousand dollars would be half of that. You don't need to do two hundred thousand dollars if you don't want to. It could be half of that. It could be, it could be whatever you'd like it to be. Um, we're not gonna see a lot more money coming in from Wahoo funds, the fee in lieu of construction. Because there's only, there's only two possible projects I think that could come in. Is that right, Corey? One of them is, has been imminent for longer than the definition allows you to use that word for. So if, I don't know, I don't know what's gonna happen with that one, but it seems like they've been saying, oh no, we're coming in, we're coming in, we're coming in. And they've actually already negotiated a price. And that would add to the Wahoo and it's somewhere in the three hundred thousand dollar range, three eighty, something like that. That could come in, but until it does, we don't have it. And so we don't see a lot more money coming into this, this fund.
Yeah, and this is probably like a completely different discussion, but like, would it make sense to have a discussion about some sort of mechanism? That would feed us some money in because like, if we. I don't know, to a certain point, it just becomes uh, I'm blanking on the word for it. Like a half-life thing where it just like, the amount that is accessible is just like reduced by half, by half, by half.
Yes, yes.
I um, to a point where it's probably just not even gonna be like worth even applying.
Right.
The thing. And so at that point, like if we have multi-year long uh, like repayments. Like they're very likely, assuming this is used like pretty like consistently. There'll be more, multi-year periods where like there just won't be money available.
Yeah, you could, you could go away from what I was suggesting. Like I said, it's just a suggestion and come up with a, a uh. Like a floor of where you'll go to with that fund, say, and just throwing out numbers, say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You won't go below that or four hundred thousand, whatever you wanna make it. And that's one of the criteria is the funding has to be available, uh, which means that. Um, after giving what they're requesting, there still has to be that much money left in the fund. It can't go below that amount by granting anybody any funds. And, and when you're granting these funds, again, they're not being given to the, the developers. They're actually being transferred from the housing fund to the water fund. Or to the sewer fund or to, to whatever fund it's paying the impact fees for.
What about developers that, I mean, how does, maybe this is in here, but. You know, we have a lot of developments where they come in and then nothing happens for five years. Would we, you know, how would we deal with that? If somebody comes in and asks for this waiver, because we're doing this affordable housing, but then we don't see the project, but we've already committed. The money.
Good, great question. Cause if, if, if they were to get approved. It, we would have to do something along the lines of a closing, uh, like you do with loans and stuff. So we don't obligate the money until you close. Um, and that's when the deeds are recorded as well. So they wouldn't have the assurance, they wouldn't have that until they closed on the property. And then it would be recorded against the property and then they would just owe us. But I could see where it's coming from, which is that if we come in and we give, say someone, you're qualified, you were the first one in. Um, you're on, you're on the hook for this money. All you gotta do is schedule a, a time to close. You know, go through this process with us and record the deeds and it's all yours. How long do you give them to do that? And we could, we could give them a timeframe, you know, like a year or six months or something like that.
Yeah, I would think that we would want to do something like that because then we would tie up the money and potential of people that are ready to go.
Yeah.
Don't have that.
Potentially incorporate like a ability to petition for an extension. Cause if like there is some sort of crazy market.
Yeah, if we had a two thousand eight happen again, and we did that with a lot of developments in two thousand eight through two thousand twelve. We just let them continue to, to extend and extend and extend. And I'm sure this city did it too. I wasn't here, but I'm sure this city did it as well. So yeah, we could build something like that and where for, where the city council has to approve that request. They, you know, it's not administrative approval. We're gonna continue to uh, extend. The council would have to get involved.
Uh, I, I really like Luke's thought. Um. I- is there a way that we could use the uh, the duplex that the city owns to generate revenue to work with? To reach out to like the hospital or the school district or somebody and off.
and offer up, you know, a place that's, that's empty right now? And could that uh, could that rent revenue go into the housing fund?
Sure, you could also sell that property.
That's the thing I keep.
So there, it is an asset. Let's put that. It's an asset. So you could use it through rentals. You could, you could um, activate the asset a number of different ways.
Yeah. Okay.
It definitely could be put into that fund.
Great.
Just for point of reference, and I can't remember the project that we talked about last time. Did they give us a, uh, did they give us a, a number for their uh, wa- their waiver?
The one that we're.
The, the amount that they want. Hundred ninety thousandish.
That's what, that would be the full waiver. The full.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, kind of find the baseline.
And I was, for the waiver, when I made the recommendation to you guys, I was recommending only fifty percent.
Right.
But if we go to no interest loan, my thought process was um, that you know, for it to, for it to be beneficial to them and to help with the cash flow, it would make more sense to, for it to be a little bit larger. Um, but that's, that's really up to you guys, how you wanna do that.
And, and just so I get the, the logistics of this right, uh, so developer comes and they say, hey, we want a waiver. Uh, you write up a recommendation, it comes to the council, the council says, yes, no, we can adjust that amount. If we say no, that the developer has the opportunity then to go back to you and say, hey, then I'm just looking for a no interest loan.
That's right.
And you can do that administratively.
Based on the criteria that the council has adopted.
Absolutely. Okay, I love, I, I really, I appreciate that system. I, I think that's very well thought out.
And I don't know that two hundred thousand dollars is like the amount that we're like settling on, but like should we tie that to something like relative to what AMI is? Is because like if we just keep it at two hundred thousand dollars, like eventually like that's going to be worth less and less like to the developer.
Right.
It could go up by CPI.
Yeah.
You know.
Like construction costs.
Yeah, it, it could, could go up three to five percent per year or something like that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I like all of that. Um, in terms of like the council discretion. I noticed that there like wasn't really any sort of like formal scoring or priority framework or anything like that. And so I think we potentially run the risk of having two very similar projects being treated very differently.
Yeah.
Um, is, is that something that would potentially like open us up to the whole like arbitrary and capricious?
We would, it wouldn't be part of the policy, but we would create uh, some kind of mechanism for applications. You could make scoring part of the policy if you, if you like. Uh, but I think for these, it just really comes down to whether or not you meet the criteria. And are you gonna do it for fifty years? Does it fall into the AMI guidelines that we deem the, the range that we want? And is there money available? Um, is it in the city and does it qualify in whatever, whatever other um, means or ways? And, and if it meets all of those, then it should be, it should be worthy on the face just to move forward.
No, I mean, like I inherently agree with that. I think partly is just like looking at it from like the political perspective. Of just like not having the community argue that like this thing that was made available to everybody is being like selectively like doled out, like there's some sort of preferential treatment or anything like that. Um, and so I think having some sort of like framework that we can point to. Uh, but, but I mean, I guess that is like you're meeting kind of like these base level criteria and once like you check those off like um, and like those are like set in stone for like, like a fifty year, or fifty-five year.
And again, that's a really high threshold for entry. And uh, they're likely, they're getting a lot more for that than our, our fee waivers or, or no interest loan. So um, I don't see, you know, just the typical uh, developer saying this, this works for me. I'll, I'll dedicate this for fifty years without having that be part of my business model already. So.
What about the no interest? Why wouldn't we charge interest?
Okay, so that's a good question. Um, Salt Lake City actually does charge interest and they do something similar to this. And they do, now granted, and if, and Jake, if you're listening, I'm sorry, no offense, but this is coming from the developer. I'd have to double check this, but he says that they're charging somewhere like two to four percent. I don't know if anybody knows whether that's true or not. Um, but two to four percent interest on some long-term loans for something like this. Um, we can do some research into that. I'd say when we originally thought about this, first of all, when I originally, originally thought of this, I thought, you know, this makes a lot of sense. We've partnered with these guys and some other things as well. This is an affordable housing project that, that's actually moving forward within our boundaries. Um, so I was ready, I did make the recommendation to just do a waiver. But the uh, where was I going with that? I lost it again.
Interest rates.
Interest rates. So they, but they wanted it to be like, okay, so we're gonna transition over to no interest loans. And they're like, okay, cool. We wanted it to be three years. Like two to three years, like, okay, no interest loans. We don't want you to tie up our money for more than three years. But when I presented that to the developers, they're like, there's no way that would even work because it would just, it would work against us through our loan processes. It would count against us because it was due so soon. It would, I don't totally understand this, it'd be a cash flow issue. Say, you know, we have to have cash flow to pay that loan back and it would go against the qualification for all these other loans. So they said, well, what about doing like thirteen years and we'd be happy to pay interest in that situation? So I think if we're, my point is that we're already kind of beyond what we originally thought of and that might have just been our naivety. That we were just naive to the, to what would actually work. But I would say if we go to five years and more, I think we should charge interest. I think that's something we should consider.
Kind of like tiered options where if you pay within this, then it's like zero.
Yes.
Yep.
Cause, cause it is tying up money for, for quite a period of time, so. And, and we also know, and I'll do the research, but we also know that it's not uncommon. It's happened. They charge interest with other programs like this as well. We just have to find what the right interest rate is. But the longer we have someone tying up our money, more interest they should pay. And that's just, that's just the way it works.
What else, Jason? You haven't said a word, which is uneven for you.
I have a couple of different thoughts on this. Um, first, I think that these properties have, have paid money into this account, you know, and stuff for, for housing and stuff. And um, and a lot of these developers are coming in and they're, they're creating houses. I don't think that this money was ever intended to um, to be carried forward in perpetuity, you know, forever. It was, it was meant to be set aside to help create housing. And um, and so I, I don't necessarily, um, I'm not opposed to the idea of a loan. I just, if I was a developer and I have this, you know, twelve million dollar project and impact fees are a hundred and ninety thousand or two hundred thousand dollars and, and I go to the city and say, hey, could you guys waive this? To me, I, I, I think it's, um, it's also that developer saying, I'm doing, I'm creating this which falls under criteria of what you guys are trying to provide, you know, you guys need. Um, you know, I'm bringing you in kind of as a, as a partner for, you know, um, something you put your stamp on for a hundred whatever thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, whatever. Um, I think that that's, and we can look at it and go, yeah, that's what this money was set aside for. That's what this money was put into this pot. It's not our money necessarily. It's money that was given to us so that we can then reallocate it out for these, for these projects and stuff. And, and, and developer has a twelve million dollar project, you know, two hundred thousand, you know, in a loan, there's gonna be like this, it's probably a bigger pain in the butt just to do the paperwork than it is just to absorb it over the, over the cost of, of the twelve million dollar loan or whatever it is. Um, so I think that like a couple of things, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not in the mindset that, you know, this money needs to last forever, but this money also, um, you know, for instance, you know, that we're, we're facing, or we're being brought forth this project that has a hundred and forty-four units that checks all these boxes, you know? And it's like, hey, we can do this, which comes out to, you know, twelve hundred dollars a unit, you know, or something like that, which is um, or whatever, I can't remember what the math was on it and stuff. Um, but um, you know, it's like it's us working through someone else to do what we were cast with, with, you know, helping to provide affordable housing, you know, and stuff. So I think that um, I, and I, and I do think that um, like Colin, great point, you know, and stuff. We have money, we have this Wahoo money that's tied up in other things, you know? Maybe the city should be paying a loan to ourselves for money that we have on these other projects. You know, maybe we should be paying interest into it, you know, because we're using that money for these other things and we're not, you know, um. And so I think that, um, I don't like the idea of a loan. I, I like the idea of partnering with these people. And, and these people that have boots on the ground, you know, there, there's, things are getting done. You know, they're not these pipe dreams, they're getting done. And this is us helping to move it along or, or say giving them like just even that stamp of approval, you know? Using these funds for good things. So that's, that's my two cents on it. I, I understand the loan thing and I understand trying to carry it through. But I also understand that um, um, I don't, I don't feel like it needs to, it wasn't meant to go in perpetuity.
And Jason, I, I definitely agree with that. Um, I do, I like the, the structure that Michael set up because I, I'm trying to imagine a, a project where, you know, maybe we have some hesitation of just giving the full waiver, but then they still have that opportunity, you know, we can see some merit.
Right.
Then they still have the opportunity to come back and say, okay, well, you know, maybe a loan is the, we set the.
And maybe it's just the, the wording allows the city council to consider full or partial impact fee waivers only in exceptional cases when a loan is not feasible.
Exceptional.
And we can, we can certainly change.
Change, yeah, you know, maybe um, and I like what, like, like Luke said, a great like, hey, someone comes to us first and, and then we can say yea or nay, you know, like, yeah, we're gonna give you a waiver or no, we're gonna put you forth to a loan. It might be a better option. I, I like, I like that, you know, and I think that.
Yeah, maybe cleaning up that wording is the.
Maybe, yeah, but I think that, but I, but I also don't, I feel like um, we, we bank this money to do exactly what this purpose is.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, you know, you got one in the hand and two in the bush type, you know, thing, you know, it's like, these are projects are happening. You know, these projects is, are, are being built and, and they're asking for us to um, to be a part of it in, in, in some sense.
So I, oh, can I respond to that really quick? I came across one policy, I think it was the city of Portland, Oregon, where they had, they had set aside, the council had set aside enough money to cover the impact fees for five thousand units. Of course, that's not as. But a number of units and the first five thousand units that come through the door, get their permitting, get their building permits and move forward, get, and they have to, they have to meet other criteria, obviously deed restrictions, affordable, all that kind of stuff. They, they get their fees completely waived and the council is paying for those impact fees through another fund. I mean, that, I, I'm kind of throwing a wrench in my own policy here by, by bringing that up, but that is, I mean, you could if you went down that road, you could, and I'm just giving you options because it's what I do, but you could say, okay, we're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars on this. And um, that equals this many units and the first.
I, I think that's a great idea because maybe you have some other developers who are watching this meeting or something going like, hey, we can get in on this, you know, if we, we'll stop dragging our feet, let's, let's start moving some dirt.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I guess ultimately it's like, do we want to incentivize things? Or do we want to like help like projects get over the finish line? Cause potentially, like, we might have a developer that like received their light tech credits and like ultimately are fine financially, but there's this thing that, hey, like we can get like an extra two hundred grand kicked off of our project, like why not? Like, whereas there might be a circumstance that this project has encountered where like there was some like insecurity with their financing and like now they could really benefit from having this. Uh, like, like waiver or like supplement, or fund supplemented to like really help them kind of get over that finish line. Um, I don't know, I think either way, we're meeting kind of like the intention of the Wahoo of trying to provide. Yeah, I'd like, I don't, I don't know, I, I feel like both of them have value. I think like the one thing that I liked about the loan is that we basically do have a cap as to how much is going to enter the Wahoo. And so a, the loan really does allow it to kind of stretch things out. Um, as, yeah, stretching out was ultimately a limited resource that we have.
Have we um, reached out to Ben Riley from Hsu?
I, I have not reached out to Ben Riley.
This would be great to get his.
I, I love his feedback, so. I reached out to the ones who have applications that are moving through right now with us, yeah.
Cause Ben has done this, you know, not these, this uh, impact fee waiver, but he might have some good advice and opinion on this.
You know, but I, I think like this, um, I know it's called, called the Jake property, you know, um.
Jake.
Where's Jake?
It's the, it's the cooperative, fourteen eighty-one cooperative, I think.
Yeah, the one on Mill Creek.
Not Jasper.
I mean, they, they have a hundred and forty-four units, um, you know, um, they're to me, this, this is, it checks every box of, of why we should be working with them and, and giving them a waiver. And I understand the waiver, like we're just taking money and putting it into, you know, water sewer, whatever accounts need to go into and stuff, but this is um, this is the first substantial project that we've had that's moving forward. And I think it's, it's pretty important to support it, you know, and um, and so I mean, that's that's kind of where I'm at on this is I, I, I feel like just this, this project is doing everything we want.
And there's another one coming up real soon.
Well, and I, I agree with you, Jason. This, this really does kind of tick all the boxes. Um, and you're, you're also right that that money wasn't supposed to last forever and ever. But I really do like the idea of leveraging our assets. The duplex and we don't have to put all that money into that fund, but um, then we could, we could fund our own fund and have control over where that money goes. Um, while still giving um, other developers a chance either at a waiver or um, a no interest loan. It seems, it seems to me that if we've only got four hundred thousand dollars or about that, tying half of that up for ten or thirteen years. That's, that's not a wise choice. I think we invest in what's here now and then we work at other ways to increase our own Wahoo.
Well, I think um, it's getting late and we have more discussion to have. We need you to take this back and do a little more work on it. Do you, do you understand all the questions that we raised and?
Yeah, I think, but I, I do think there's kind of a diverging path here that I'm, I'm hearing two council members kind of saying, well, maybe, maybe, and maybe you can do that without even changing this policy where you, you're, you look more favorable at um, waivers in the beginning and, and um.
And maybe we don't do a hundred percent waiver. There's always that option too.
There's that option.
Which is what was recommended last meeting, is we just do fifty percent.
And as it's written in here, we have that.
Option.
We have that option.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll put some more blanks in there as far as dollar figures go. And so, so you can um, think more about that, but, but yeah, I guess the, the, this path that you guys are talking about still works under this.
Yeah, it does. I think, I think it just needs to kind of move, you know, some things.
Yeah, maybe get rid of the extraordinary circumstances and stuff like that.
You know.
And if nothing else, this spurred this discussion, we didn't have, we just had that money sitting there. And what shall we do with it? At least this has given us a chance to have this discussion and begin to start to work to where we want to be in a efficient and transparent manner.
Sure. Yeah, so, oh, sorry.
Sounds like we all are very supportive of this project that came before us in our last meeting. Is this still work with their timing?
They, they want to move as quickly as they can, obviously. They're, they asked today if they could have their request on the, on the meeting next week, next week, next month, the next meeting. Not sure if they know yet, but we don't have a second meeting in, in November.
So could we, could we approve?
So could we, could we approve this? With, with, with some changes as.
I think it'd be hard to approve with the number of changes, if you want to hold.
Shouldn't, I don't think.
Yeah.
We all feel really comfortable.
It'd be really hard to track everything and get it all in there. I, I think I'd have to come back.
Yeah, well, and I, I think ultimately like, if we want to waive the fees, we can do that without the policy like being.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So they can still come to this next meeting.
So we could put them on the meeting, next meeting, and you could. Either review it under the existing ordinance, or I could have this finished and you could adopt it, you could review it under this.
You know, and, and I know that they're, um, planning on speaking with the commission as well. And asking for the commission to help, so I think that this also is an opportunity for us to. You know, work in, you know, companionship or something to some extent, you know.
How would the county, does the county want to give us money?
No, the county would give, the county would give them money towards.
I think the county already talked about it.
Yeah, so, um. So anyway, I, I think they'd still be on the agenda, right, for the next meeting.
Yeah, we can, that's no problem.
Both, yeah, both of these on the agenda. Well, and there's like talk of potentially doing like a special meeting.
Yeah, we needed to.
Yeah. So I'll work with the mayor on this and I'll make sure and Nathan and we'll get everything. Um, together, Summer's gonna have to help with that too, make sure it got everything together, um, because I didn't write everything down. It's a lot, yeah.
But one thing for me that's the biggest concern is for providing a waiver or agreeing to a waiver. And the developer doesn't, isn't like ready to break ground, and I don't know how we do that, but. What I don't want to see is these guys come in and they're ready to go and then something happens and they're like, whoa. We're gonna have to wait, you know, and I don't know if that's gonna be the case or not, but it could, I mean, we've seen projects.
It's development, it's the development world and it's financing and it happens all the time.
Right. And so then tie up that money and then, you know, and then give comes in and they want it and we don't have the money to do that and they're ready to go tomorrow.
I think we can, I think we can work with that.
Yeah.
That's the one thing that I have a biggest issue.
Well, and I mean, like, there is always the. And I, I think it'd still be like at the discretion of the council of like having a waiver be a waiver where we're not shuffling funds from one pod to another. We're just like severely like, like restricting funds from like a department. Um, and so like, I, I think like that's worst case scenario, like if there are no funds available, like you can't just legitimately like waive the fees. But obviously like.
But it would be coming right out of the general fund and the purpose of this is to pay back our general fund.
Well, and it speaks to the sophistication of the council, I think, to look at it this way because many councils would just say, just don't make them pay it. And not acknowledge that those impacts still exist, that those master plans are real and they do have. Projects that need to be finished, so, so I give you kudos for that, I mean, it's, it seems like just a given with the council, so it's awesome.
That's the other thing with this project too, though, it's a hundred and forty-four units, is it in phases? Or is it just the, they're gonna.
Phase one is a hundred and forty-four units.
Okay, so that would be, okay, gotcha, that I wanted to make sure because. That's the other thing, if somebody has like a three frapes project that has two hundred and fifty units and then we're giving the full impact fee waiver.
Yeah, it would have to be tied to, like I said, closing, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta show you're moving forward and then we have to have a timeframe.
For that.
For that, so you gotta do it within this timeframe or else you'd be reconsidered, you're on the list for reconsideration first, yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to, um, table this? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just one, like little, so in the definitions, we have affordable housing project and housing project with the exact same definition.
Oh, I'll look, we'll look.
Yeah.
We'll make, try to get rid of system, we, I, we put it together kind of quickly, but then I really pushed on Nathan to get it back to me quickly. So, um, so having a little bit more time is gonna be awesome, so we can go through that, so.
Yeah, the sooner you can have the draft before the meeting on the ninth of December, which, you know, is a month away.
You got a good time.
Then these guys can really kind of get into it.
There's no holidays between now and then either, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't mean to push it, but still, the sooner that these guys have their.
My last meeting, we can go crazy.
Yeah.
I, I move that this, uh, Moab City Council tables resolution. What number is this?
Eleven dash two, twenty twenty-five.
Eleven dash twenty twenty-five, the Affordable Housing Partnership Policy as presented. As presented.
Okay.
I'll stick to that.
Yeah, and I think.
Oh.
If you can just, you don't even have to use the number, just say. The, change that to ordinance and the same policy and it's all good.
I move that the Moab City Council approved the ordinance.
Uh, not a table.
On the table.
Or table, the ordinance, the Affordable Housing Partnership Policy as presented. Second.
Motion by Colin, second by Luke. Discussion, Colin.
I think we've done, yeah.
All right, all right, all those in favor?
Those are no cage fight.
No, that's going to pile.
That's what the specials.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post. All right, Michael, motion passes. All right, Caitlin, thank you so much.
And the collective will be on the agenda regardless. The next meeting for their waiver request, so.
Good work, Michael.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, it was, uh. Thanks to Nathan too, he did a lot of work really quickly on.
Thanks, Nathan.
All right, that's the end of our general business and city manager updates.
I did have a really long one, but I'll just go through it really quickly, um, there was a, I just wanted to mention that there's a notice that. I mean, our cameras aren't great here, so, um, there's no point in even holding it up, but a notice is going out to, um. People who own homes that were constructed before nineteen ninety. If your home was constructed before nineteen ninety, you got one of these, and if we haven't already done, uh, research or some work in. Or research or tests to, to, to make sure that you don't have a certain kind of water line at your property. You're getting, you're gonna get these every year until we do that. Uh, so we have to, the EPA says that we have to go in and we have to confirm. That, um, private, these private lines in these houses that were built before nineteen ninety do not have any lead in them. And this is just something that every community has to do now, and we have to give these people notice that there potentially could be lead in. Their private lines until we go in and confirm that there isn't. And the way you confirm that is you have to go a certain distance away from the, the meter on their property, dig a hole. And inspect the pipe and see what kind of pipe there is, what kind of fittings and things like that, so it's not something that can be done very quickly, but. It's something we're shooting to do about a hundred and fifty, uh, inspections per year. And we have about fifteen hundred to do, so it's about a decade that it's gonna take to, to do this. Now, this is, um.
I'm just looking at Caitlin because I know she, her house is older too.
Oh, okay.
Well, I got one in my house, it was not built before nineteen ninety.
Okay, well, there could be some mistakes in there too, uh, we, we don't, usually don't make mistakes, but, but.
They read it, they went, what is that?
But there, I mean, there is a chance, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the chance that there could be lead and I don't, also don't want to make it sound like it's an emergency either. Um, this is just something that is possible because the types of materials that were used on houses before nineteen ninety, it's just a matter of fact. Uh, we, we do have to go through and confirm all of those, we're gonna move as quickly as we can to do that, but it's not going to happen within a year. Um, people can read this, this notice, if you get one of these, what we're suggesting is to do what the, the notice says and contact our staff. They can help you do a quick test and, and some other kind of research. And find out if you have a threat just by testing your water and things like that. So there are things that you can do quickly to put your mind at ease and then, um, we'll still have to come in and do the. The, uh, inspection of the line and things like that, but we would, uh, ask that everybody who is receiving one of these, please call our utility staff. That's the best way to get the best information and to get, um, to get good information for everybody who's getting this, so.
What happens if there's, you've got lead? What if your pipes are lead?
Well, so if, if there's a test that's done, my understanding is if there's a test that is done and it shows that you have a, you have an amount of lead within your water. Um, you can, the health department would make a determination and say, well, you can't operate this or something like that. Um, again, I, it's hard to get into these what ifs because I don't want to scare anybody. This is just something we're required to do, we don't have any evidence that anybody has any massive amounts of lead, we do lead testing. At general, um, intervals at different locations throughout the city and we've never, our service lines have never shown. Uh, an amount of lead that, um, that would cause any concern at all, which is basically, there's no lead in our lines. So, uh, so I don't want to cause a lot of concern, but we will guide you through if something, if you do a test and you find that there might be. A little bit more lead in your line than your neighbors, um, we'll guide you through on how to manage that and, and. Put you in contact with the people to help resolve that. Remember, we are talking about private lines here, these are not the city's lines. Um, we have tested and looked at our lines and we continually do evaluations on our lines, we are talking about private lines. And we're doing everything that we can to assist private property owners and navigating this and, and the EPA and state. Um, departments of environmental quality also require us to put these letters out every year until this is done, so. It went out last year for the first time.
Hundred, fifteen, fifteen hundred homes?
Yeah, it's two thirds of our, of our customers. So, yeah.
That it?
No, that was one thing. Uh, I'll do the arrest really, really quick, the holiday lights are going up, if you've seen them, they're pretty much up.
In the front.
Yeah, uh, there's.
You did?
Yeah, work going on in the city hall rooftop, uh, we have the liner going on the top, which is basically our roof. That was destroyed in the hailstorm, being paid for by insurance money, we also have. The, uh, solar panels going up, we're, we're putting some of the solar panels back that are still useful and replacing some of the solar panels, which is a project approved by the city council. Uh, the structural evaluation is happening or, or is, they did a site visit for the MRAC, the Aquatic Center last week. And so we are moving forward on that structural evaluation and that is. Our plan this year is to get all the stuff together so that next year we can put together some projects to make some serious fixes to the MRAC. Uh, Walnut Lane is continuing, uh, the cleanup is continuing, they've done a lot of really good work there over a really short period of time. If you read the article in the newspaper today, you know they have other jobs to do as well, and we are also looking at, um, hiring. We are going to get a contractor, one way or another, to come in and get rid of the asbestos because that's the only way we're gonna get rid of it. So we are working towards that as well. Uh, in January, all of the Rocky Mountain power lights are gonna start getting replaced, the, the luminaires are gonna start getting replaced. And in the neighborhoods, they're gonna do that soft light or whatever it was that, that we all talked about and that I don't remember the, the name of, and Alexi's not here, so.
Come through.
Comfort, yeah, comfort lighting. Um, and then waste, uh, recycling receptacles are going up, uh, soon in the downtown area. We're not gonna be able to replace all of them, but we are replacing thirty-two cans, which is sixteen waste and sixteen recycling in the downtown area. And they will also have messaging on them, which we're working on right now, and we're all, also gonna work with our partners like the Chamber and stuff like that, so they can put messaging on them. Since UDOT won't let us put messaging on their utility stuff.
What is, what is soon mean?
They're in stock, they're here in the city, today Alexi and Savannah went out and they made a, made a plan for which ones are getting replaced. Um, based on information that we already had and then site inspections today. And I, I wish I could tell you it's gonna be a week or two weeks, but I know it's gonna be soon and I could send an email out to council to let you know when.
Are they gonna get installed and then wrapped or wrapped and then installed?
I think installed and then wrapped, because the, the wrapping is not, I mean, it's just the accoutrement to the, to the, uh. Trash can and that has nothing to do with the function of the can itself, so.
Could that be a Christmas present for us?
Sure. Consider it done.
Thanks.
It'll, okay, they'll be in before Christmas, so. Last thing, uh, we had an election recently, I want to congratulate everybody who was elected and re-elected. Predicted, looking forward to working with, with you guys for another four years, for four years. And for Summer, for all the work she did, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. And, uh, everything went off without a hitch, even though it was a stressful couple of hours, waiting for results, but that's not us, so. Thanks, everybody, that was it.
I wasn't stressed at all.
It's just, it's just waiting for the numbers, regardless of what they say, just waiting for them, so.
All right. In the works, right, and we'll talk about that later, Summer and I and Michael.
Any word on the house?
Yeah, um, there is just one hangup, which is liquidated damages, we have to have a contract with this person to come in and do this work. And, uh, we got a great price on it and everything, but there's only one thing left to. Uh, finalize with them and that's liquidated damages and what that means is if this person starts the project and then tightels it. Um, there will be liquidated damages against him for, that we can go after him for. They have signed it?
It's signed it.
Okay, so that is not an issue anymore, so they have signed it and we're working on getting a date to start, so we're moving forward on it.
Unless we need to amend it. Okay.
You signed it and then sent the request back, so I'm not sure for you now.
He either knows what he's doing or he doesn't know what he's doing. So we'll figure it out.
Okay.
This is right, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get it done, no, we gotta get it done, all right. Are you done?
Closer than it's ever been, just last thing I want to say, so, yes, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Um, council reports and we will start with Luke.
Uh, all of my meetings have been getting canceled.
So you have a little baby Arthur?
Yes, we did have another surgery, but, um, everything's going well, so kind of appreciate that the universe provided a bunch of canceled meetings.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Great, thanks, Tony.
I don't have anything either because my meetings have all. One conflicted with this meeting and then I have to be in two places, it went, was tomorrow and two places at once on Friday.
All right.
Mine are all in the future.
Colin.
I've got a couple pages of stuff.
Reader's Digest.
Where do you want me to start? Um, I went to the, uh, the community open house, um, on Monday. That was, uh, really interesting at the. The hoodoo, like I said, Josie Wyatt's, um, and then watched the, the MTAB meeting. The following day, um, seems like there's some really good promotional work happening, uh, it'll be really exciting to see. Uh, what kind of fruits that bears, um, today I had a, a trail mix meeting. Uh, there's a volunteer appreciation party on Friday, the spring spruce update for this, uh, coming spring is April eleventh. And then we did have a couple of comments, uh, one about the crossing at the, by the bark park, um. Kids going to and from school, uh, it sounds like maybe some signage or something else could help that situation, um. And then also, as always, the crossing at, at, uh, Williams Way and First West came up again. And then I, uh. With Jason's prodding, I went by Walnut Lane today and there was a flurry of city staff activity, a couple of dump trucks. An excavator, all kinds of stuff happening there, so it was really great to see. That's it.
Okay, Caitlin.
Um, well, on the twenty-ninth, I attended, uh, another. League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee Housing subgroup meeting. Um, talked about annexation plan amendments, um. I don't think a lot of it really pertains to us, it seems like it's more urban boundary, urban areas saying. We're full, um, so, but kind of distinction of when to adopt a new annexation plan versus amending it. Um, there was some brief discussion and I think all of us were pretty not in favor of, but potentially a bill to. Um, rather than the state taking a preemption approach, uh, there's a bill to propose a preferred land use regulation. So the state would say, here's the rules that you have to follow. And with this policy, a municipality can say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna keep to our own, but it gives. Applicants the ability to apply to the council to say, well, but state code says this, so will you allow us? And to, uh, just like a weird way of saying like, no, the state wants to work with people. Um, instead of just preempting everything, I, I. Um, instead of just preempting everything, I I, so I don't know where it's gonna go. Apparently it was maybe gonna go before um some other state bodies, um. Stay tuned on that. Um, and then there's also some conversation about reasonable diligence. Um, I would need to double check my notes on really specific language on that, but but it seems like conversations we've had about people holding permits for a really long time is a statewide issue, and so they're looking at language about um what a reasonable diligence period means, how many extensions you can grant, kind of like trying to relook at some of that language, so. Interesting, um. I also had a couple of meetings canceled this week, namely, uh, I canceled the Housing Task Force meeting and then yeah, the LHD meeting was canceled today. Um, in lieu of that, um, the two bodies wrote a joint letter regarding um proposed general session legislation and that will cause some pretty significant impacts to homelessness. Um, so several of you responded and signed on to that, thank you so much, um. We will be wrapping that up, that will be sent to Utah Homeless Services Board for their meeting on the twentieth. Um, and there's a lot of kind of coalition building on that across the state. Mostly in urban, I think we'll probably be the only rural that's submitting comments, but it's still important. Um, and then last week I was in DC for the Housing Assistant Council's National Rural Housing Conference. I was there not specifically on behalf of the city, but when I was there, did meet with our federal lobbyists and it's nice to finally sit down and actually meet them in person and um find out more about what they're working on, how they can um continue to support the city, so. It's interesting and then also went to the um Office of Tourism Open House and yeah, had a conversation, talked to Trish also today briefly about how the city wants to be involved and we wanna support our downtown, especially downtown businesses and tourism, so. That's it for me.
Thank you, Jason.
Um, okay, October thirty-first, I uh attended trunk or treat. Um, ended up being right by Miles, we had a super fun time, um, it was a lot of kids, so many kids.
The candy.
So much candy. Um, it was also good to see Moab City there, um, and um, yeah. Yeah, lots of kids giving our candy. November fifth, I had a Grand County EMS um um budget meeting that was the morning after Prop thirteen passed and so um, leading up to that, we had three different budgets, you know, that we were kind of planning on. If it doesn't pass, you know, if it does pass, and um if it doesn't pass, how are we gonna, you know, make it work? So it was, it was really a um, so we, we had to get that budget passed that we met the next morning at nine AM, to start working on that and um kind of you know, um, figured out, you know, that money is just a real lifeline, that those taxes coming in, so appreciate that passing. Um, November eighth, I attended the Chamber banquet, which was a ton of fun, um, it was very well attended, um, and um and I wasn't lit home, and so, driving, so there you go, and um, and um and then November tenth, uh, I also attended the Community Tourism um Open House, which was, which was really good. Uh, November eleventh, I attended the Travel Council meeting, um, which was yesterday, they had it on uh Veterans Day. Um, because they had all of the agencies here that they're working with to help promote Moab and it was, it was really good, they've been here for like three or four days, it's just, it was interesting hearing all of them, how they're gonna work together to um to promote Moab and and kind of things that they're working on, so that was really good. And um, also in there, I had a airport board meeting um that I attended last week. And um, and things are progressing at the airport really well and they're, they've just laid down some new asphalt to help so that they can start building more hangars or at least more area port hangars, so. Um, so that's it, that's, that's it.
Thank you. I um was here for the preschool Halloween uh event, which is all the preschool kids come and get all dressed up and we give them, we don't give them candy. We give them books and bracelets and things like that, so.
It's no fun at all.
No fun for those kids. We have to go to city hall.
Never come back.
It's so much fun, though, the kids are so darn cute. Anyway, I love, I love that. Uh, had a meeting with Ryan and Tim also, and just in case everybody hasn't heard, the government is now open. Um, the House passed the budget this evening or the CR, basically, it sounds like they are doing a continuing resolution. Um, the federal workers will receive all their back pay, anybody who received a reduction of force notice will be re- rehired, um, air traffic controllers are gonna be receiving their back pay and um, the SNAP program and the WIT program uh will continue and they also pass some funding so that even if this currency R, which is planning to uh expire in January, those benefits will not be affected, so that's great news and thanks to everybody who is contributing to the food bank we here at Habit City Hall, and just because the SNAP program and the WIT program are back in effect, it does not mean that we shouldn't be helping those folks that need some food. So think about um contributing here at City Hall. Tended the Office of Tourism event on Monday also, yesterday was the Veterans Day event here uh out at the county. Um, was able to give a nice talk and recognize our um resident Jim Jones who passed away, who was a World War Two veteran, a neighbor of mine, very good man and will be missed. Today, was it today? Um, today's Wednesday, yes, went to Synergy for an award for their safety, and that they're doing a really good job out there at Synergy. And then um tomorrow, we have a Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District, where we'll be, it's a special meeting for us. We'll be talking about Prop thirteen, which passed, yay. Um, and how that money's gonna be allocated to all the entities that are gonna be a part of that. And then next week, oh, tomorrow, Friday, we have the Utah Transportation Commission here at City Hall. Encourage you guys to come if you're available. Um, I'll be in um welcoming them and talking about some of the great things that we've accomplished with UDOT and our relationship with UDOT, some of the things that we'd like to see them thinking about for the future. And then next week, I will be in Salt Lake City for the National League of Cities Conference and be serving, I believe I told you, on a, on a panel that Alexi's helping me with on cooler Moab, hot Moab, um, how we deal with changing climate.
Yeah, extreme weather.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty excited.
Always been hot here.
Yeah, this, you, I had a meeting to to kind of prepare for that and it's like, well, yeah, I'm in the desert, it's always hot, you know, cuz I'm people on the panel are Salt Lake City Mayor Aaron Mendenhall, the um mayor from Thousand Oaks, California, and then a city council member from Portland. So a lot of different environments that are dealing with different issues in regards to a hotter climate. So that should be fun, looking forward to that, but I'm sure I'm gonna need some prep cuz I have no idea what to say about it. Um, and then, just so y'all know, our next meeting is not until December ninth. Um, so we've got, you know, we don't have a meeting here in November. Our strategic plan meeting in January is going to be Thursday, January eighth and Friday, January ninth. So get that in your calendars, we're gonna be doing it at the Fairfield Inn.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, um, so we'll be closer to town, um, and that is it for me.
January fifth is the swearing.
January fifth is the swearing in, isn't it? It's the first Tuesday summer. First Monday. Yep, right here. Yep, we'll be doing it again.
Nice.
Yep, but we will, but we won't be wearing masks this time.
I know.
That'll be nice. All right, that's it, we do need to go into a close, what's that?
I miss that.
Time is the swearing in, noon, when is? Um, so we need to go in closed session, so if I could have a motion to go into closed session to discuss reasonably imminent or pending litigation.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss imminent and pending litigation.
Jason makes a motion, seconded by Luke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you.